And five, four, three, two, one.
I'm Tom LaCusa. Welcome to the Select Board meeting of February 5th, 2024. I'm the Select Board Chair. I'll be confirming that all members and persons are anticipated on the agenda. Our President can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Josh Levine.
Yes.
Beneath Amalvitha.
Here.
Mark Gold.
Here.
Dan Zwirko.
Here.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Lynn Simmons.
Here.
Mike Barbieri.
Here.
This open meeting of the Long Meadow Select Board is convened in person and via Zoom webinar is posted on the agenda and on the town's website identifying how the public may join. There's no chat or Q and A function. All the materials for this meeting are available on the agenda posted on longmeadowma.gov. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless I note otherwise. This meeting will feature resident comment. For residents attending the meeting in person, please raise your hand when we get to the comments section of the meeting, and I'll call on you to approach the microphone. For residents participating in the meeting via Zoom webinar format, please use the raise hand icon at the bottom of the screen. The meeting moderator will promote you to panelists, unmute you, and give you permission to speak. If you join the webinar by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand and star six to mute, unmute. Residents who wish to speak will identify their names and addresses only. Each individual is afforded three minutes for comments. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some of the attendees are participating by video conference. Please remember to mute your phone or your computer when you're not speaking. If anyone in attendance is recording this meeting, please announce yourself now. McCourty's? Anybody? Okay. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I'll stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, we start with announcements and we have three. The annual town election is set for Tuesday, June 11th, 2024, at the Long Meadow Community House. Nomination papers are now available in the town clerk's office on 20 Williams Street through March 1st, 2020. The deadline to submit nomination papers for certification is 5:00 PM on March 5th. For a listing of open terms for the upcoming election, as well as the calendar for important dates and deadlines, please visit longmeadowma.gov/elections. Presidential primaries for the 2024 primary will be held on Tuesday, March 5th, 2024. Early voting begins on February 24th. For additional information, please visit the town website, The town offices will be closed for President's Day on Monday, February 19th, and observance of the holiday. The Select Board meeting for that week will be held on Tuesday, February 20th. And now it's time for resident comments. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to make a comment today? No one here? Okay, do we have anyone online?
Not that I see.
Not that you see. Okay.
Nope.
Okay, so no residents comments. We have some interviews and appointments, the Board of Registars appointments. There's a vacancy for the Board of Registars due to recent resignation. Additionally, two other members of the Board of Registers have expired and expiring terms. The names in front of us tonight have all been recommended to fill the one vacant position. So it says for more information, it's being sought from the town clerk regarding the expiry terms of one member and soon to be expired term of another. So, but right now, the folks, we have two folks on that are going to be continuing, and we just have to have one for this next election, right?
There's one current vacancy right now. That's what's in front of you tonight. Another person is currently still serving there, but they have an expired term. The other person's term expires in March. So tonight, all you have to deal with is the vacancy, or you can wait until the next meeting when we have the full slate in front of you.
All right. Yes, Mark.
Tom, if I recall, either last year or previously, one of the things we talked about, because it's a three-person board and two political parties, we said we would alternate from two of one and one of another to one and two. And frankly, since we don't know the political affiliations or who nominated the two people who are remaining, I'm not sure we know how to go about and play that game if we still want to do that. So Josh has the answer.
Yeah, Manny and Aaron are Democrat. Right. And I don't know Sandra Metz, but I can surmise.
She's Republican.
So I can surmise, yeah.
Okay. The question is, so Manny was a Democrat and resigned. So if we wanted to appoint somebody, our policy or our practice, it's not a policy. Our practice had been to go from a two-to-one Democratic majority to a two-to-one Republican majority for the next cycle and then flip back later if we want to continue that.
So here, if we're going to fill Manny's term, we'd be filling it with a Democrat, right? So they could finish off his term.
And when is he supposed to expire?
2025.
Oh. All right, so. Also, when did that policy come into place?
It's not a policy. It's just always a practice that we.
I mean, it's not like we're sending big slates of electors. This is just certifying the election.
We're just trying to be equitable.
Yeah, that's fine. Exactly. We tried to actually have a board that would have two and two, two Republicans, two Democrats. And it was, we thought it would work and we went through, and then they said, the state said, no, you can't do that. You have to have three, otherwise you have to make some major changes to your bylaws and everything. And so we had to switch back to what we have. And, you know, we, you know, so I think it would be good to have the Republican replace the Democrat. We'd have two Republicans, and then next time we would have, you know, if a Republican steps down, we'd put in two Democrats. I mean, that.
Well, no, yeah, I think because Manny's not finishing his term, we should probably have a Democrat finish that term and then.
That makes sense. That's fine.
Okay.
You know, and then, and then, you know, we can keep with that practice that way. And then also with Sandra Metz, her term was up last year, so it's probably a problem that we haven't reappointed her yet, right?
We didn't receive names last year.
Okay, so probably something we should go ahead and do.
Wait till next meeting and just do all three? Okay, we'll do that. That's fine.
We can't do it tonight?
Or we could do, or we could replace. We don't know if they want to come back.
Yeah, we need confirmation that those two candidates who are seeking reappointment aren't back. We just needed in writing that they are seeking reappointment.
Right. We've already complicated this enough. Yeah, no, but I think the idea of replacing Manny, you know, with a Democrat and then when the term's up, well, I don't know. I mean, it's just hard for people to be on and be off. So maybe we should just wait and do it all at the same time and try to get some equity for both parties. Because they've already prescreened, you know, candidates for us, so we don't have to interview anybody. So if that's what we want to do. Can that make sense? All right, and there's no pressure, no problem with that.
No, you did get more names, though, than you have spaces for, so if you want to interview, you can. I mean, it's ultimately up to you.
Well, it depends if Mrs. Metz or Freed want to be reappointed. It says they're up for reappointment, but we don't know if they want it.
Okay, so why don't we invite them? Does that make sense? Invite them next week or next meeting if they want to come? I think that that's, see, the thing is that the Town Democrat Committee and the Town Republican Committee, they prescreen them. It isn't, like, we can meet them, but we're not, they give us an order of like one, two, three, four. Yeah.
The question is, do they want to, do they want to be considered for reappointment or not? Or do they want to drop off? That's the question.
That's the question.
And so it doesn't even give me that they need to come, but just at least let us know if they want to be reappointed.
Yeah, so we put an inquiry with the town clerk's office to make sure they receive that information, so.
And so if they do, then you have a slate of five for a board of three.
That's fine. We can deal with that.
Okay, so you don't need interviews.
If they're ranked, if they're ranked out of the committee, then I think that that, I would go with that. Yeah. Which is, that's where we've been doing it for years.
Yeah, that's fine, Josh. That's fine.
And it's, and most people stay on for quite a while, you know. Seems like a pretty low-pressure position. Well, this election could be the lowest pressure of any of them that we've had. Okay, so we'll, we'll hold on to that until the next, next opportunity, next meeting. Okay, the next thing is, we have public hearing, a couple of public hearings. And I believe we can start.
It's not 7:30.
We have to just see what time we have.
We can't start those until 7:30, so if you want to jump to the next topic.
So let's go to Select Board comments then, and then we go back. Any members like to make any comments? Yeah?
Yeah, so I just wanted to provide an update on the work of the Municipal Fiber Task Force. So we had a very busy January, and now we have interviewed four different fiber providers. So we've interviewed Whip City Fiber, Fiber Spring, GoNet Speed, and Entry Point. And, you know, amongst those four different providers, there are various different ways that they provide fiber. So everything from completely private to municipal-owned fiber networks to open access. And so we've done those interviews. We're thinking about whether we want to interview any other entities. But this month, we are going to go do a facilities tour of Whip City Fiber and then are also scheduling one over at Fiber Spring, which Fiber Spring is South Hadley and Holyoke Gas and Electrics. They're, they're a fiber provider. And so, so that's, that's kind of where the committee is at right now. To kind of, you know, I've been getting, I think, more and more inquiries about this. People are pretty excited that the town is undertaking this process. And, you know, the timeline of all of this is lengthy. So the biggest hurdle is poll applications. When you put a poll application in, it takes about two years for that application to be approved. And you also need two positive votes at town meeting to create a municipal light plant, which in many of these situations, we most likely need to do. So, you know, if you're looking at two votes this year, one in the spring, one in the fall, that would, you know, get that piece taken care of, but then there's still the poll application issue, which is that has to go through before you can even start putting out bids to begin construction. So we are working with, you know, a sense of urgency. We don't want this to be a drawn-out process because this can take, you know, a long time once we do make a decision and, you know, bring a recommendation to the Select Board and to the town. But, you know, I think the only thing worse than being slow is fast. So, so, you know, we are being deliberate in it, and, you know, I think we are also, we've also benefited from the fact that a lot of the towns around us have already done a lot of this work. And when we're looking at these different entities, we're not having to guess necessarily how it's going to play out, how much it's going to cost, because we can just look at the towns around us and see how it's played out there. So we do have a lot to kind of work off of. So I'm gonna, you know, keep you all updated on what's going on, but we are, you know, working methodically. And I think originally we'd said that we would hopefully have a recommendation by winter, but I think we should actually be having a recommendation next few months, so.
Oh, great.
Yep.
Any other Select Board comments?
I just have a question for you. You said it required the creation of a municipal light facility. Do all the options require a municipal?
No.
Okay, that's, okay, that's all I want to know. So because that may be a consideration you guys have to.
Right, yeah, it is a consideration. Yeah, so not every option does. I think if we have not made a decision yet, we'd at least like to get that first vote in, just to get that banked. Yeah, and then kind of.
It's fine. I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, 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 absolutely.
Yes. I just, she's probably not watching anymore, but I want to say, Sarah from the reminders, I think she's been covering us for a long time, this reminder switched up how we're covering, so she's no longer or not in her territory. Just thank her for many years of covering us and for doing a good job. And as I said to her in an email, we're lucky that we have a local news source that covers us and people get the chance to know what's going on. And then also, I just wanted to mention, I lost my father last month, and I got a really nice card from the town manager's office that everyone signed. And it's a present at the funeral and donations. I just want to thank you all for your support. It really means a lot. We're lucky to have a good group here that all gets along, and so I just want to say thank you.
Mark.
Yeah, and kind of in the spirit of what Beneath reported, the Energy and Sustainability Task Force is looking with the, with the support and backing of the town manager, looking at the potential for municipal aggregation. So they've started the process of interviewing municipal aggregating consultants, I guess, for lack of a better phrase, and learning about it as they do it. That will also be a recommendation. I think they've got three on their list to interview that generally covers the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, almost all the cities and towns in the Commonwealth. And it'd be an interesting recommendation, I think, and hopefully that'll come back here sometime also in the spring, maybe late spring.
Any other comments? Okay, we'll move on. The town manager's report, I think we have time for that.
Thank you. The town recently concluded an auction of surplus property. Items sold were primarily from the former adult center and included no longer used daycare furniture and some vehicles. In total, 23 items sold netting the town $16,525. As you all know, we need a replacement roof and some replacement windows at Center School. Since receiving some funding in 2022, we've continued to try to find ways to accomplish this work. We had planned on submitting a statement of interest, SOI, to the MSBA as part of the Accelerated Repair Program in 2023. However, that program was paused in 2023 due to rising construction costs. The program restarted for 2024 and will likely see a backlog of applications. The DPW is working with Colliers to prepare an SOI to be submitted by the March 1st deadline. There are steps that need to take place before that submission, including authorization by the school committee and Select Board. At the February 13th school committee meeting, the superintendent will update the school committee and ask for their vote. And then at the February 20th Select Board meeting, I'm going to ask that the Select Board vote to authorize submission of the SOI. It's also the same budget, same meeting where the school budget will be presented. So the superintendent will be here that night to answer questions related to Center School as well. And another MSBA topic, we took part in a board meeting for selection of the architect. Meeting was January 30th, and I attended as well as the school committee chair, superintendent, and the town's OPM on the project. Three firms bid on this project. The next step is public interviews with the firms and MSBA on February 13th. At the conclusion of the interviews, there will be discussion and deliberation and a ranking, and we should know the selected design firm at the conclusion of that meeting. And demolition of the former DPW facility is moving along. The DPW filed a request for advisory opinion with the MIPA Office. A project notification form's been prepared and will be filed with the Mass Historical Commission. We received an opinion of probable cost to demo the building and all associated work that goes along with it, which was estimated at $2.5 million, and that exceeds the $1.9 million we have set aside for this. DPW is going to continue to work on this, and we feel fairly confident we can decrease the number and get this project done with the funds that we have set aside. And that concludes my report. I'm happy to take any questions you have.
Thank you, Lynn. Now, in some towns, if they have a building like that, they will have the fire department burn it down and then like get practice. Is that an option at all?
We've talked about it informally. We haven't moved ahead on any of that yet. We still need to get all the permits in place.
Okay.
If you go up too fast, I think town fire.
They wouldn't get enough practice. We're gone. Isn't there an asbestos concern? Can you do that with?
It's transite. It's full of transite, as much as asbestos. You're right.
Yeah. As far as I'm not that. Hey, any questions for the town? Okay, well, it looks like we have time to move to our approval of our minutes also. Can I get a motion?
Yeah, I'll move we approve the minutes of the January 16th Select Board meeting.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Okay, abstentions? All right, and now we have, well, we have 10 minutes. I guess we could start the EverSource permit discussion. You know, we have a motion that was sent to us, I believe Mark Gold put this together. And so, Mark, or Lynn, I mean, why don't we start with you? Because originally you, we took some action, and then our DPW director is here also.
Sure, so thanks. I believe you're all aware that DPW issued a stop-work order on the previous trench permits and winter work that had been taking place by EverSource. That was due to continuing issues that we were seeing, the last one being the condition that a roadway had been left in when the job site had closed up for the day, causing damage to some residents' vehicles. And so the decision was made after consultation with police and DPW to pull those permits, to cease allowing roadwork for the winter. We do have a DPW director here tonight, and he can elaborate on that if he need to. And in doing that, I also had some inquiries from Select Board members on the status of work and the condition along Meadow Street as well. So both of those culminated in this coming forward as an agenda topic tonight.
Okay. Well, just first, does anyone have any questions? Their DPW director, if we should ask him to join us? I'm sorry, I was about to say. All right, thanks for joining us. And so when did you first notice the roads were?
We should back up to the last call, where we had noticed there's a lot of projects going on at once, and we were having a hard time, I think, keeping track of them, as well as some of the timelines. Since then, we've, we've been communicating with EverSource a great deal more. And they've been much better about communicating where they're going to be. But we did make a decision then to, to limit the products to just one permit at a time. And Long Meadow Street's been under construction for over a year now, and the permanent patch still hasn't been put in it. So we let EverSource, we worked through the winter, we're one of the few towns around that do, in order to try to get that work done so we can get a permanent patch on Long Meadow Street. Unfortunately, EverSource hasn't been able to finish the work at the end of the day in a manner that's been safe for vehicle travel. So the couple, it's really, we don't monitor the quality control all day, but at the end of the day, a couple of times, the roads come unraveled. So we made a decision to pull the permit until the hot mix plants can be opened full-time and until we can find a better way to make sure the job sites are compliant with our standards.
Okay, so this is, before you were here talking about how, you know, work projects weren't ending at a reasonable time, right? And there was.
A couple of times, they've gone beyond that, but that, that issue, I want to make sure that I give them credit for. They've been on the phone with me most days, making sure we know exactly what time everything is ending. So that hasn't been an issue this, the last couple of months. The issue has been why we pulled the permits, unfortunately, recently, was because the condition, the roads have been left.
Okay, all right. Any questions for Sean?
Yeah, Sean, I'm fully confident that the DPW has the, has the wherewithal to hold back on EverSource. My concern and the reason I put this forward is that it goes a little bit beyond just the DPW informing the Select Board. You know, back in November, they were here and, I guess it was, and gave us this whole lineup of what they were going to do, only to find out two days later, none of it was true. And, and I think that it doesn't hurt to have the DPW be able to say, look, here's what the Select Board is doing for us, and, and, you know, they won't let me, even if I wanted to, you haven't met their requirements. And so it's really not a statement of the inability or the lack of ability of the DPW, but really a backup that you may be able to use, but also one that goes beyond that to make sure we have the truth being told to us, because it clearly wasn't done the last time. And frankly, you know, today I just drove down, if you go on, you know, north of Saint, the church, Saint Andrews Church on Long, it's a disaster.
Sure.
And that's the way they left it, so I think they need to fix it.
Yeah, and in order, we really need them to come in and finish the connections to the residential houses so they can put that permanent patch on, which is why we allowed them to finish that permit. And we haven't let them pull any other permits for any of their work on municipal property. And it would be great if they could, because we're going to have an issue with conflict running into L Project if they are not out of there. So we do have a problem. And like you said, the last meeting, there was a whole bunch of projects they assumed they had permits for that they did not. And I honestly don't see them getting much more done besides Long Meadow Street this spring, because it's a tremendous amount of work to rip that road back up and put concrete in before they can put the final course on top of it. My only concern with the, the motion tonight is that I think there's some specificity regarding emergencies that I would like to get away from, in order for the, I think the town could be held accountable with some liability, and I don't really feel comfortable with that, but again, that's, that's up to you guys.
Can you just elaborate on that a little bit?
I, I think that the 12-hour, the time constraints you have on that, in terms of how we would react to giving an emergency permit, isn't something I, I feel comfortable with, but.
Why is that? How long, could it take longer to discover an issue?
If EverSource has a, could have a, I don't know the ins and outs of their emergencies, nor do I claim to, which is why I wouldn't want to be holding them up for a permit when I don't think I feel comfortable deeming what a kind of emergency they're dealing with. They don't pull emergency permits for me very often. I think maybe two or three in the last year. I think maybe one in front of your house, Mark.
And it wasn't an emergency.
Right.
That's, that's what, that's what led to this. It clearly was an emergency. It was scheduled weeks in advance, and yet they went to get the permit. They said it was an emergency, so that's the problem.
I think in that point, I wouldn't want to pit EverSource and DPW against each other in terms of who's saying it's an emergency. I mean, they, they told you that, and then when you pushed and you found out more information, then it wasn't. But I don't know that we want to put the burden back on DPW on that end. And I do want to point out, we do have EverSource officials here if you wanted to hear from them tonight. But I also know you have a hearing in three minutes.
Yeah, we have like two minutes. I don't know how much EverSource, I mean, we could table a discussion until after the hearings. Would you like to do that? Okay. So we have, yeah, all right, well, great, thanks. Because again, you know, the Select Board doesn't have to deal with these issues very often, but it's been twice, you know, this is the second time, and we'd like to do, we can avoid a third kind of discussion about road construction and our major roads and finishing them up. So we have about 30 seconds here. So the first hearing is a dog as a nuisance hearing. We have three public hearings scheduled for tonight's meeting. And so Attorney Stephen Chaplin of Mead, Telham, and Acosta is in attendance tonight to assist us with the hearing. So why don't you take a seat there? Hello, let's see again.
Perfect timing.
And then the, we'll be ready in 10 seconds, and we can entertain a motion. Oh, yeah, you probably want to use the microphone.
Is that okay if I leave my coat there? Works really well outside where it's 20-something degrees, but in here, it's not so great.
I think you gave us the motion open last year. Yeah, so do you want to make? Oh, does our, our dog attorney want to, did you, do you want to give us the motions? Do we have the right language? Or should, can we open?
I think you guys did a great job last time, just kind of going off the cuff. And if I hear something that's a little off the beaten path, just give a, give a little guidance.
All right, I'll move that we open the public hearing regarding a dog at 107 Albemarle Street.
Second.
Second, okay. All those in favor? Okay, so let's begin the hearing. So we received letters, complaint letter, and so where should we start?
I can give a little introduction if that's, if that's advisable. So just to kind of put this in context for everybody, by statute, a Select Board in a municipality is a, is a hearing authority that is tasked with investigating any complaints regarding dogs, complaints that the dog might be dangerous or that might be, might be a nuisance. So, you know, my role in this proceeding is to try to make sure that it goes in an orderly fashion, to make sure that we observe and. fashion, to make sure that we observe and adhere to everything that the statute requires of us, or I should say requires of the board. So, there, although we might all have an idea of what a dangerous dog might be or what a nuisance dog might be, general laws, chapter 140, section 136, actually tells us a very specific definition of what those terms are. So, the job for the board is to conduct an evidentiary hearing, meaning we're gonna hear testimony from the complainant, we're gonna hear testimony from witnesses, would be eyewitnesses to any incidents. And then the board has to make the determination based on what people testify to, what they've seen with their own eyes, what they've heard with their own ears. Is the dog in question falling within the definition of a nuisance dog, of a dangerous dog? If the board finds that the dog in question falls within one of those categories, then the board has to go forward and order remedial measures. If the dog should find, I'm sorry, excuse me, if the board should find that the dog is a dangerous dog, the statute actually prescribes seven different remedial measures. The board can choose between them, one of them or multiple of them at their discretion. If the board should find that the dog is a nuisance dog, the statute is actually fairly wide open, so that the board has some even broader latitude in that case. And if after the hearing, the board should decide that, no, you know, this dog doesn't fit within the definition of a nuisance dog and doesn't fit within the definition of a dangerous dog, then at that point, the hearing is concluded.
So, should we start with the, we have some letters, the first, where we have the nuisance complaint letter dated eleventh November, November seventh, from Mike and Linda Sullivan. Are they here this evening? Okay. Would you guys like to speak to this letter?
Yes.
Okay, then why don't you come up and join us?
Len's gonna stay here.
Well, if she could, if your wife could.
She's gonna stay there, that'd be fine.
If she could, oh, okay. She's welcome, we, you know, the speaker should work. These tables better be wheelchair accessible, I'll tell you. It's a new school. Thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, if I may, once we're situated, if I could just swear the witness in since it's an evidentiary hearing.
Yeah. And you could just move that speaker over a little, just, it records it for when people are listening. Okay.
Sir, could you please state your full name for the record?
Michael Sullivan.
Linda Sullivan?
Linda Sullivan?
Yep.
Could you both please raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth in the matter now in hearing?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman.
All right, so you wrote this letter and do you wanna just tell us what, what your experience was, what your concerns are?
Yeah, we have an issue with a dog that moved in behind us diagonally. Every time we go on our deck, our yards, it barks at us loudly, the whole time, every time. So, we're here, we, all we want it to do is to stop. The animal control officer, Caramonte, came up with a plan, we thought it was a good one, but it hasn't been implemented, so that's why we're here.
Okay. And so, when was the last time that the dog was barking? Was it since eleventh, since November, I mean, is it still happening?
Yesterday, it's been cold, we haven't been out as much. Yesterday I went out and it did its thing.
Okay, all right.
It barks loudly and continuously through a chain link fence, anytime we're on our deck or backyard.
Okay. But any members of the board have questions?
Is this specific to any time of day, like daytime versus night or just any time?
Anytime we're out together.
Okay. And how long does the barking last for?
It goes continually until, should I talk about Officer Caramonte's plan? Because she wrote the plan there too. Do you like me to summarize it? I don't know if she's here or not.
No, she is, and we, you know, we read her report and I know, and I know in her report, she said that she was in the backyard for twenty minutes and the dog barked for the entire period of time. So, I was just asking for your, in your experience, if that was, you know, similar, consistent?
Yes, it is similar and consistent.
Okay. And I know that, for me, there was a little bit of confusion reading the letter and looking at some of the evidence, that the name of the dog doesn't match up. It seems like Grover is the dog that's next door to you.
Why don't you?
Why don't you put over a seat?
So, we're having Marty Lee join us, she's our dog control officer, animal control officer.
And Mr. Chairman, I don't know, I swear the, the animal control officer, can you please state your full name for the record?
Marty Lee Caramonte.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth in the matter now in hearing?
Yes.
Thank you.
So, I was a little confused myself and I'm not sure if the Sullivans even realized, so they're looking at the corner of the back of their yard, a dog nonstop barking at them when they go outside. So, I think they mistakenly, one time, which I understand, you're frustrated, a dog's outside barking, then they heard another neighbor on Albemarle yell, bad dog, Grover, stop digging. Grover is owned by somebody else on Albemarle, but that does not change the fact that it is Coda owned by Paula Goldberg that is the dog that we're here tonight. And I did go out and see it and Coda is the one in their backyard that is just nonstop barking so that he can't enjoy his backyard. The Grover part, I think somebody was yelling for Grover, but that's not the dog in question.
Okay, okay.
I have a question maybe for our attorney.
Yes, sir.
The complaint that began this is a letter and the letter says, Rover, Rover, Grover.
No, it says there's a dog in his backyard that's barking and he can see it, but he said he heard somebody yelling, Grover, stop digging. So, I just want you to know, those are separate dogs, but he, he can see the dog that's barking at him in his backyard.
I understand that, but the written complaint says, and I'll read it, she seemed confused and shut the door, occasionally we can hear a woman shout, Grover, bad dog, and stop digging, Grover's behavior is bad enough, but the stop digging command, the man makes me nervous. If when Grover succeeds in digging under the fence, we feel our family neighbors, especially my five-year-old grandson, who's now fearful of visiting us, will be in danger. So, to me, the complaint was about?
So, imagine, I just, just want you to bear with me for a second. Imagine you're looking at your back door and a dog is barking at you, you see a woman come and bring, because Grover, Coda is owned by a woman, who he sees maybe half an hour into bringing it in. He hears another woman yelling, Grover, because her dog down the road was digging, okay? She's saying, stop digging. So, so he got confused at the name of the dog, but he, but he's complaining about the dog in his backyard, he just heard somebody yell.
But the basis behind the complaint that I read, and that's why I'm asking your attorney, was, I'm fearful that the dog will successfully dig. That was the nature of the complaint. The dog that was digging is a different dog. And, and so, I mean, that, you're right, that there's a confusion between two dogs. I understand there's a dog barking, dogs bark, dogs bark, you know, it's an annoyance. But the basis for the complaint was, I'm concerned that when Grover succeeds in digging under the fence, we will feel our family, neighbors and our five-year-old grandson, who's especially fearful of visiting us, will be in danger. That was the nature of the complaint. So, that's my question to our attorney. What's, is, is this complaint about a fear about this dog or a different dog?
I would say that is for the board to decide whether, I, you know, don't, I apologize for giving a really lawyer answer, but, but seriously, the board is the finder of the facts. So, you know, there could be a threshold question here of, does this letter sufficiently, you know, identify the, the dog, you know, that's being, is being complained of? I can tell you that this statute, chapter 140, section 157, has very infrequently been interpreted by the courts, which is why when we end up in appellate proceedings in the district court and beyond, it's a little bit of a exercise in creativity sometimes. So, I cannot sit here and tell the board that because they're, because the name of the dog does not appear in the letter, that as a matter of law, the complaint would have to be dismissed, that that case does not exist.
Right. My question is though, if the name of a different dog appears in the complaint letter, which it does, what does that mean about this complaint? That's my only, only question and you can see my confusion, because does, does that lessen the, lessen the concern or the impact or the nuisance or dangerousness or whatever we decide of the dog that we're here talking about, 107 Albemarle, at all? I don't know the answer to that.
I don't think that it has any impact on whether or not the dog is dangerous or nuisance. I think what it might have an impact on is a question of due process. Has the, you know, have the owners been put on sufficient notice? Was the complaint particularly, you know, specific? I think it really goes more to the, I mean, it appears that the owners of the dog in question have been put on notice, they're here, they're probably intended to testify, I would imagine. So, an inaccuracy in the report, I think would go to the weight of the, you know, incredibility of the witness.
Yeah, just, today I was reading our pack and said, who the hell's Grover? But, so, but I think that the, this was enough to start the investigation, which to me is, it doesn't matter, it doesn't really matter at the end of the day, what their, what the name of the dog is that they're fearful of, they know which dog it is, or not even fearful, because we can also make a nuisance finding that it's too much barking, which it sounds like is really the complaint here. So, I think that everyone, everyone who needs to be here is here, we know what the problem is and if we want, we can tailor a solution. So, that's, really, I share the confusion and I did wonder, but I think that it was enough to get us here and get us, get noticed, everyone, so I feel okay doing it. I certainly don't think we need to get rid of it, because we do, everyone knows which dog it is, even though there's a mistake, it's a mistake of fact, it doesn't matter here, I think, because the notice works.
Yeah, I mean, I, I understand what Mark is saying, because it's not just the name of the dog, it's also describing that dog's behavior, but I think the first paragraph accurately describes the issue with Coda and why we're here tonight and they've received notice for that. So, I feel also comfortable moving forward.
Okay. But in understanding what action we should take, the dog you're complaining about, is it trying to dig under the fence? Is that something that you worry about, that dog specifically coming into your yard?
No, I don't worry about that. Officer Caramonte visited him, I don't believe the dog is dangerous. I believe that it's a nuisance because it barks each time, all the time we're out.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, we have an officer here for, do we have questions about the police report? Do we wanna have him make a report?
That's in regards to the liquor license hearing.
Pardon?
I think Officer Almeida's here because of the liquor.
It is for the alcohol.
Uh, yeah. Mr. Chairman, could we ask who is here to testify or potentially testify, just so we know who we can call up?
Right, is there any other folks here? Okay, and, all right.
Because last time, you know, we had neighbors show up.
All right, and I assume you're Lawrence, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we have Mr. Sullivan and Paula Goldberg.
My mother's unable to be here to help, she's handicapped, walks a walker, just got out of the hospital last week.
Okay, all right, so, all right, any other question for the Sullivans?
I guess I'd just ask a question. If, if you hadn't heard anybody say anything about potential digging, would you still have issued this complaint, this formal complaint?
Certainly, indeed.
Because of?
Every time we go out on our deck or our yard, it loudly barks at us, each time.
So, I'm, I'm a dog lover. I'm an animal control officer. Dogs bark and yes, I realize that, that dogs can bark. I do think there is, in the nuisance law, there says, you know, excessive barking, you should be able to enjoy your yard. So, I did talk to all the parties way back in the beginning of November and said, hey, I'd really like to stay out of the select board hearing. If you're just courteous and could bring your dog in when it starts barking, Mr. Sullivan was very happy with that, if we could just be courteous. I said, otherwise, I'm going to recommend that we block the visual from the dog. So, three weeks went by, I thought the problem had solved itself, Mr. Sullivan told me to come back out and see for myself. All I did was walk out of his back door and the dog is, I sent you a video, just barking, 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 I stayed there for twenty minutes. I mean, you couldn't enjoy your backyard if a dog was out there just nonstop barking at you. So, I would feel wrong to not go forward and just tell him he's gotta live that way. To me, it's pretty clear that that is a nuisance. I went over to Mrs. Goldberg's house, I had a marked police vehicle, I knocked on the door for a long time, the dog continued to bark, was, the door was not open, I happened to run into Larry when he got, was coming back in as I was leaving, so I went in, I met with her, I met the dog, the dog was friendly to me, I wasn't worried about that aspect, but it clearly, if I lived there and I'm a dog lover, I wouldn't like that, I wouldn't like being out in my backyard for a half an hour with a dog just barking loudly at me. So, I get, that's, that's, that's why I'm here.
Josh?
I have a neighbor with a dog that yips, but I hear right away from inside, Rocky, shut up and we'll come back in, so.
Right, so that's reasonable. Five minutes, maybe.
Yeah. And so for our last dog hearing, you, you came in, you had a pretty good idea of what you thought a good solution would be with the double gates and the blocking the door. Do you have any other, do you have a plan formulated for here, what you think would be effective?
So, I would recommend that that, well, two things, that, that the woman, the owner, Paula, Larry's mom, would bring the dog in if it was barking, you know, that she wouldn't let it out in unattended, she wouldn't let it out if she's going to sleep, she wouldn't let it out if she's leaving the house, that, you know, she, the dog can enjoy its yard, but if it starts barking, especially if it's the nicer weather, then bring it in. But I would also recommend putting a stockade to block the visual, because there are yards abut, so he cannot go out in his yard with his grandkids or sit on his deck, have a coffee on his deck, he can't, without the dog barking at him and not stopping. So, if, to me, if he blocked, if he got a stockade, maybe, I'm hoping that would help if the dog didn't have, I think that I was just bored outside.
Is the angle of the yard such that a fence would block it or if the dog's far back?
It looks like it would, I mean, it's hard for me to guarantee that, but I think it would help greatly if it wasn't seeing people outside.
I don't know, we have a, I don't remember what our bylaws, but there's some, some limit on the fence, yeah, even in the back. So, depending on how, like if you have a deck, you might still have?
Right now, it's a chain link. And, and I did, I started this in the beginning of November, saying, hey, could we just stay out of, because it really don't, I don't, I don't think you guys want us running to the select board with every dog complaint. So, I said, this could be resolved if your mom could just bring the dog in when the dogs, dogs bark and we expect that, but it shouldn't be where somebody can pick up the phone, the police department come down, stay there for half an hour and this dog still hasn't gone back in. That, that seems unreasonable to me. So, to me, the next step, I still think she should bring the dog in, but blocking the visual is my recommendation.
Okay, all right.
I'll call Larry up.
Well, I, I don't know if you have anything you'd wanna add to the discussion, Larry?
Excuse me, I do.
It's Goldberg, sorry, you have, we'll swear you in.
So, can you state your full name for the record, please?
Lawrence Goldberg.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth in the matter now in hearing?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
As the animal control officer knows, the dog was new to my mother, we got her the dog to replace another dog that unfortunately had been poisoned in our yard and we had to put to sleep. I, after speaking with the animal control officer after this occurred in November, had to go to the police department and spoke to an officer, Farnum, and dropped off the paperwork from the emergency vet in Windsor about what happened to our last dog. On November seventh, my mother called me pretty much in tears to tell me that a gentleman she did not know, she normally won't open the door for anyone because she lives by herself, she's eighty years old and she's fragile. herself, she's 80 years old, and she's fragile. The day in question, she was expecting a phlebotomist to take blood and run tests on her, when Mr. Sullivan, banging loudly on the door, thought this was the phlebotomist, she went to the door to open the door to a person she didn't know. He was loud, he basically kept saying to her, Grover needs to shut up, you need to bring Grover in the house, if you can't do it, I'll take care of it myself. My mother was not confused, she was scared of Mr. Sullivan. She did shut the door in his face because she was scared of him. She then called me. I went to the house, I live in the same town, asked my mother what happened, she explained the details to me. I called the Long Meadow Police Department, I spoke to a Sergeant Lombardi before I went to go speak to Mr. Sullivan, to ask him if I needed an officer, or if I should do this neighborly. He said, no, Mr. Goldberg, if you can talk neighborly with the neighbor, and I didn't know his name at the time, please do, if it becomes a problem, call us, and we'll have a cruiser out there right away. About an hour later, I went to the house, Mr. Sullivan was home, spoke to him, he talked to me the same way he talked to my mother, he talked down to me, kind of bullied me. I asked him a couple of questions, all he was concerned about is showing me a video of the dog barking for 20 minutes. I said, you can show me a video of you holding your phone up, taking a video, what are you doing on the other side of the phone? Couldn't answer the question. He said a few things to me that made me not want to talk to him anymore without a police officer present, so I stepped off his property, and I called the police department. An officer showed up, spoke to both of us, it's in the report. At the end of the report, one of the things that the officer had recommended, which I was willing to do at that time, was that myself and Mr. Sullivan exchanged phone numbers. My mom won't answer phone numbers she doesn't recognize on the caller ID, because of all the scams of the elderly. So, my mom is pretty much, lives by herself, this is her new companion, her best friend, gives her reason to do things, get up, let the dog out, feed the dog, for the dog to lay with her and keep her company, this is her new best friend, to replace the dog that we unfortunately lost last April. While speaking to the officer, when I agreed to exchange phone numbers, Mr. Sullivan walked away, and it's in the report, like he had no interest in exchanging numbers. At that point, I was like, well, if he doesn't want to exchange numbers, how can we work this out, that if he's going to have a family function, maybe my mom will leave the dog in the house unless it actually needs to go to the bathroom, and we can try and do things. I don't know if you guys can show the pictures that I sent in for evidence of the backyard?
Yeah. We've gotten those, yep.
Okay. First of all, we can't see his house. The pictures I took that you have are me standing on the slider of the deck where my mom lets the dog out, so it's six or eight feet high. If you go to the actual corner of the yard, one side is six-foot picket with chain link on the outside. The backside is chain link with the neighbor's natural cover that, I don't even know how tall those bushes are. We cannot see him or them from that corner. So, I don't know what he can see. He says he can see us, we can't see him. I did speak to the animal control officer, I did look into getting a picket fence added to the back section, which I was told two things by my fence guy. One, can't do it this time of year, have to wait till the spring, do the cementing improper, whatever. And the other thing is that the neighbor's bushes that hang over our fence, if we cut them back, which the town would allow us to cut them to the fence, we may kill them, and we're not allowed to kill the trees.
Okay, so, I guess two questions. One, is there a basis? Do you believe the Sullivans have a basis for their complaints?
Yes.
And the second thing, is there any solution that you think of that can happen immediately?
Yeah, if I can discuss one quick thing before we get off track. Mr. Sullivan mentioned that yesterday the dog was barking. I've already notified the animal control officer, and I notified the town manager's office through an email. At around 3:30 yesterday, my mother let the dog out. Dog was out for a couple of minutes, excuse me, and she heard the dog, because she sits at the slider now on the kitchen table, so that the dog does bark as the animal control officer asked, she could call the dog in and minimize what the neighbor's calling a nuisance. My mom heard the dog bark in the corner, she immediately called Coda in, minute or so later, the dog came in. But while she was doing this, standing from the window on the deck, she saw Mr. Sullivan with his phone attempting to video the dog again.
All right, so you're, so you're saying there's no basis?
No, if the dog.
They have any, there's no reason they should be complaining?
Well, I think.
Because your mom takes the dog in enough that they just, there's no.
She does more now than she may have before, because the dog was new to my mother.
Okay.
The dog was getting used to my mother's voice.
Yeah.
But what I'm getting at, when I met with Mr. Sullivan on the 7th, before the police officer came.
Right.
I explained to him that the yard is fully fenced, the dog will never dig out, you've got the wrong dog, the neighbor's dog does dig out, which I sent you guys information on.
All right, I think you've made it clear. No basis, confusing Grover and her dog. What about a solution? You have any solutions?
Well, again, my mother's paying more attention, she's now sitting at the window where she lets the dog out, as the animal control officer recommended.
Okay.
And like yesterday, when Mr. Sullivan was antagonizing the dog.
Right.
To get her to bark, so he could say, oh, yesterday the dog barked, the day before the hearing.
Okay.
So, I think that the gentleman who told me to my face, I hate dogs, he's never had an animal, and now he's picking up my mother's dog.
All right, so you're saying, as of February 4th, things are much better, because?
My mom watches the dog more.
Yeah.
According to the animal control officer, just before the last hearing that was canceled due to the snowstorm, she said she hadn't had any complaints since the last time she was at the house and met the dog, and now all of a sudden today, he says here at the hearing, well, the dog was barking yesterday. I'd like to know what he's doing to antagonize the dog.
Right, well, I would think that complaining at this point, since November, wouldn't really be in his best interest, you know.
Again, that's, that's actually what Mr. Goldberg said when I, when I first called him, he said, what is he doing to antagonize the dog? And I think he should go in if the dog barks when he walks outside. And I didn't antagonize the dog, I went out there and walked outside. I filmed it, because we get here, and then you need proof. So, don't necessarily, I just want it noted that I don't think that's antagonizing a dog to film it, and I wasn't antagonizing the dog, all I did was walk outside. So, I just want that on record.
Mike, can you pull up the pictures?
Mr. Chairman, will we do that? Could I just ask a clarifying question of Mr. Goldberg?
Yes, please.
Sir, when you're testifying as to what's happening at your mother's residence, is that something that you're personally observing? Or is that something that your mother's reporting to you?
Some of the stuff I personally witnessed, some of the stuff my mother's reporting to me.
So, were you at the property yesterday?
I was, after she called me to say the dog barked a couple of times. She called the dog in, and she saw the neighbor trying to film the dog in.
So, did she report that to you when you went to the property at a later time?
She called me around 3:30, I got to the house around 4 o'clock to see what was going on, because I was not in Long Meadow at the time, I was in Enfield, so my girlfriend and I came back as fast as we could.
At that time, she had already called the dog in?
Dog came in within two minutes.
So, the dog was still outside when you got there?
No, the dog came in, as soon as my mother said she heard the dog barking in the corner that is where Mr. Sullivan says the dog barks at him, she called Coda. Coda, within 60 seconds to two minutes, came back in the house, she shut the door, she called me. She said, Larry, the neighbor was just out trying to video the dog, she could see him from the height of her house, and it's just coincidental that we have a hearing 24 hours later, and now he's trying to say like he just told you, the dog was barking yesterday.
Okay, so you didn't see the dog get called in, that's something your mom reported to you over the phone, and then you arrived at the property?
Correct, and I trust my mother.
Okay. Any other questions for the board, from Mr. Goldberg?
And Mr. Levine?
Yes, I have a question from Marty Lee.
Oh, yeah.
I can wait until we're done with Mr. Goldberg. Marty Lee, which fence were you recommending be?
So, that's, that, that picture is pretty deceptive to me, because it looks like it's blocked, but if you look at the video, and I can pull it out of my pocket and show you, the video that I sent you guys, coming from his, he's the cornerback, that you see a little bit of his house, it looks like he's really blocked, but he's not. When I walked out in his backyard, the dog can see straight into his backyard. So, that corner back there where the chain link is, if that was to be blocked like solid, the dog then, if it's, that dog's, it sat in the corner barking at me, high pitched barking, and I sent you the video. So, so if that was blocked, in my way of thinking, if his grandkids are out there, he's out there enjoying his yard, it's not going to see anyone out there.
So, the dog could be on the deck and see across, that was my question before, but.
Yeah, so then it should be brought in if it's, again, a dog's bark, and I understand that, and I'm not saying it needs to never bark, I just think that.
Mike, could you go to that other picture?
Yes.
I was just trying to help both of them enjoy their yards. The dog.
Oh, okay, so that's just zoomed in, so the chain link fence is to the right side?
Yeah.
Okay.
May I say something?
Yeah.
I have not seen from the neighbor's side, I know from this side, if I go there and I don't wear glasses, and I stand in that corner, I don't see, other than his deck from the higher height, if I'm standing on the grass in that corner, I can't see through the natural cover that it butts our four-foot chain link fence.
Okay, and has anyone ever done stuff, like, if there's an existing chain link fence, could there be a temporary block put up, you know, because it says there's no winter, you know, he doesn't want to dig with cement, but could they put, could something be attached to the chain link fence that would block successfully?
And weave it with privacy slats.
Well, I mean, I'm asking.
If that would work, if it would block, I don't know if the privacy slats block the view, I.
They don't block 100%, but pretty well, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, because, well, what's there now is not.
I would be more looking for some kind of solid thing that the dog can enjoy its yard, Mr. Sullivan can enjoy his yard.
Right.
And then, yes, sometimes maybe if they're on the deck or something, maybe Mrs. Goldberg needs to call her dog in, but maybe both can enjoy their yards. I understand it's winter now, so maybe, maybe a deadline of the springtime. I don't think there's a lot of problems right now, because he's probably not out in his yard, it's freezing out. But as it gets to be spring, he's going to want to enjoy his yard, the dog will want to be outside, so I still, in my thinking, putting something solid on that back corner so both, that's my recommendation. I guess what my fear is about the privacy thing, I'm not opposed to that, I'm just, if we state that, and then those privacy, you've talked about those things that go like this, so then you can see a little bit of movement, then the dog's still barking, and then we're back here.
I'm just talking about for the winter, yeah.
Yeah, so, I don't know, if there's something solid that could.
Well, I mean, I guess it's up to the owner to figure out, you know.
That's my recommendation.
Marty Lee, have you had any experience with those electronic barking, you know, suppressant things that I see advertised?
Yeah, I, I hear a lot of people say they don't work.
Okay.
I think they traumatize the dogs.
Fine, forget about it, okay, that's all I want to hear.
All right.
So.
And I honestly don't think that this lady who's having a hard time calling her dog in is going to successfully zap her dog, and then she might zap her dog five minutes later, it'd be confusing to the dog.
No, that's fine, I just didn't get this information. My concern is that, you know, we don't know that anything we do because of the deck, because of other things, will actually stop.
It would block a visual, when the dog is down playing in the yard, it would block a visual of his yard. So, the dog could play, they could be out. The only thing it would not block would be if he was sitting on his deck, and I do think he should be able to sit on his deck.
Yeah.
And, and then Mrs. Goldberg could call her dog in, but maybe she could leave her dog out longer, which would be in her best interest, if the dog could stay out and not bark and play, and, so that's my recommendation.
Yes, Josh, do you have anything else?
Not my head.
Anyone else? I guess we could close the hearing?
Well, I'd like to say one other thing.
There were other neighbors, I thought, that were coming, but.
Oh, there's other folks, your neighbors?
Yeah.
Did you guys want to speak to the issue? You're welcome to. We'd have to have you come over, I don't know, because people won't be able to hear you from there, but, okay, the help of the board. Maybe, I don't know where we should.
We can ask folks to sit back.
You can grab that.
Could have folks who are done testifying step back as well.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you, I know it's, probably the first time you've spoken in front of the select board.
Yeah.
But thank you for stepping up, and.
Sure.
So, what, what information do you have that you think?
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Oh, we gotta swear you in, of course.
Could you please state your full name for the record?
Sure, Bailey Gervin.
And do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in the matter now and hearing?
I do.
Thank you.
And when we swear, or?
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
Could you state your full name for the record, please?
Eric Cassini.
And do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in the matter now and hearing?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so, you know, what do you have that will help us? We have, you know, two parties, one says there's no basis for their complaint, the other one's saying they can't go in their yard.
Sure. We're actually, if you look at this picture, we're the property that's abutting with the picket fence, and we don't have as much of a problem as I think our neighbors, Mike and Linda, do with the barking, we kind of accept that dog's bark as well, but he certainly, the dog is certainly a rowdy barker and does not stop absolutely when we go out and we have the fence blocked. So, I think maybe the dog sees our garage opening through the tiny little slivers in the fence, it happened just today, so I can certainly back Mr. Sullivan up that it is still happening. That's, that's really all I have. We go out in the middle of our yard, nowhere near the fence, and we still get barked at. That's all I really have to add, he's certain, but certainly can see why it would be a nuisance if you were trying to enjoy your, your.
Good, thank you. Does anyone have any questions? No?
I do.
Oh, well, not you. Did you have any comments? Yeah?
Yep, so, I live across the street from your mom. I didn't know any of this was happening. We just moved in a few months ago, and we're brand new to the neighborhood. So, over the past month, I was home all the time studying for my boards, and definitely heard the dog bark a lot, but I just shut the windows, you know, like, not that you would have them open right now anyway, but we moved in late August, so on and off, I've had to shut the windows because of excessive barking, but we just had a lot on our plate, so I haven't addressed it with the neighbor. But I would just say that I would definitely back them up that the dog barks an awful lot.
Okay, well, thank you, both. Is there any other questions? Yeah? No, I don't have any questions, I was just giving a comment. Well, just wait for. Close, yeah, okay, a motion to close the hearing.
May I say something, please?
No, no. Do we have a motion to close the hearing? Is that what you said? No, but I'll make a motion to close the hearing. Okay, and second?
I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? Okay. So, yes. So, I appreciate our dog, our animal control officer's suggestion, but I'm concerned about the comment Bailey made about the fence hasn't done anything. I think the better, so, you know, we can ask this, this resident to spend some money and put up a fence, but it doesn't sound like it's going to do a whole lot of good, not to mention the fact that it, maybe even when there's nobody out there, the person across the street can hear it. So, the question is.
I'm looking for a solid fence without the privacy here.
No, no, but, but the picket fence is, seems to be a solid fence, and she lives on the other side of the picket fence, and the dog in the yard can't see her, and she's, they still.
Well, I think it can.
There are small cracks in the, I can see when the dog is up against the fence, so I think the dog can see me.
One of those plastic.
Okay. All right, I guess we've got to define what a solid fence is, then, if we're going to acquire a solid fence.
If I may, Mr. Chair, the first thing the board has to decide is, is this dog, I I don't think there's been any suggestion this dog is a dangerous dog, but I, I do think the board needs to deliberate on whether the dog fits within the definition of nuisance. And if the dog should make that finding, then remedial measures would need to be discussed, but just would be remiss not to point out, if the board doesn't make that finding, then there's no basis for, for ordering a fence.
Okay, so, as we look at the definition of a, a dog that's a nuisance or dangerousness, what are people feeling about the state of the dog in terms of being a nuisance, or, I didn't hear much about people thinking this dog was a danger, so, yes.
Yeah, I'm glad we don't, there's no indication that there's any dangerous dog here, and I'm glad to hear that, because that opens up a different can of worms, but it does sound like under the second definition of nuisance, this would be a, Coda would be a nuisance dog by excessive barking, causing interference, that a reasonable person would find such behavior disruptive to one's quiet and peaceful enjoyment. We heard from the Sullivans, and we heard from other neighbors, which I think it was helpful for you to, to speak, that, that the barking does not, continues to go on, and so I think that that meets the definition, you know, if we didn't get a complaint, we never would make the finding, but we got the complaint, so we do have to make the finding, I think.
Okay. Other people feeling the same way about meeting that definition? I know I do.
Yeah.
Yeah, clearly it's the definition.
So then, we need to, well, if these are the findings, then we need to figure out what's the next step for-
Mr. Chair, if you would indulge me to make the decision writing easy, a motion to make that defining that Coda's a nuisance would be very helpful.
Okay, can we have a motion?
Yeah, a move that we find Coda is a nuisance dog under Mass. General Laws, Chapter 140, Section 157, the second definition of a nuisance dog.
Okay, we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? Okay. That's the finding, and then we can, you know, make some, you know, we have some authority over what the owner, you know, can do for remedial action, or ameliorate the cause of nuisance, but I, I mean, I haven't heard much that could really resolve it, you know, with the dog staying in place, I mean.
Well, I think that, Mark is right, that if the picket fence isn't doing it, and those, those do degrade under any stretch because they expand and shrink, I think we'd have to, if we're gonna require something, we'd have to do a PVC fence, completely solid wood fence, or, not wood, PVC fence, that have, that are plastic and they have no gaps. It sounds like that would be the only thing that would work here.
Right, well, that's just a guess, because we don't know, I mean, the dog seems like he has very good, good eyesight and hearing, and so, and he's, it's, he has a consistent pattern of liking to bark, I mean, you know, it's like, any consistent patterns we have, it's hard to break, I, I don't know, I have a, I have a hard time believing that, you know, if he saw a feet going underneath the fence, he'd probably-
Well, they don't, they can go all the way down.
Yeah.
Now, if, if this doesn't work, what do you do? And if, if it's hearing, you can't, we can't stop the dog from hearing, although this might help with that.
Can I tell you the solution, please?
Nope.
No.
And, and I don't, I never wanna remove a dog if I have to, so that's, we gotta try, I, I wouldn't, I would never wanna go to anything beyond that, unless I really had to.
Right, so, so you're thinking that we should take the first step, I mean, it's been, since November, nothing's worked, and now you're saying the first step would be to require a fence that would really eliminate the line of vision, which is a good recommendation, and what-
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think the fence is on the right track, my worry is that the fence cannot be tall enough to completely block the view, and I wonder if that runs into, you know, our bylaws about the height of a fence, or, you know, what you can have, so I'd want to, I guess, get some clarification on that. The other thing is, is, I mean, I think maybe Marty Lee would know best, some kind of training that we can order that might help with this?
I, I, I don't know, I mean, you certainly could, I, we have an older woman, I mean, I guess I would like it stated with the fence that we would like her to, you know, call the dog in within, like, I don't know, whatever you guys decide is a reasonable amount of time, but to me, if your dog is barking, you just go call it in. So, to me, you know, five, five minutes, you know, I think somebody should be able to study for their boards and not have a dog barking for 30 straight minutes, I, so I think stating that the dog should come in and not be left out for extended periods barking, and try to get the privacy fence. I like the dog, the dog's a nice dog, I just think that we should try to maybe help all parties, I don't know that training, because, again, is the, is the woman gonna follow the instructions for the training if she's, we're asking a very least amount of thing, call the dog in, like, so how can we say your training involves, like, it's not really the dog, it's training the person, how to be with the dog, what to tell the dog, you know what I'm saying, so, to me, the most elementary thing is just call the dog in. We could order, I don't know, I guess you could order a dog walker, somebody to get its energy out, but that, that's money, so, I'm, I'm trying to go the most-
Right, so, if, if there was a-
I guess that could be another step, if we get past all this, we could order a dog walker, I don't know, I hear you, I'm not trying to remove the dog.
Well, you know, again, we're looking at, you know, you're saying the pattern of, you know, be, again, we've said since November, and if someone was gonna, if the woman who was the owner of the dog was calling the dog in after five or 10 minutes, we wouldn't be here, we wouldn't be here. So, involving another entity that would do some caretaking for the dog, you know, perhaps walking and, or daycare, I don't have no idea, but I think you're, you know-
I, I personally, I would hate to order daycare because it's this woman, like he said, her best friend, she, she got it for comfort, I guess I would like to start with the fence and the order to have her call the dog in, and if that doesn't help, then we could go another step further, I hate to put-
Mm-hmm, right.
I, I, I guess that's my feeling, but you guys are welcome to-
I have a solution, if you'll let me speak.
I'd like to defer to our, our animal control officer in terms of blocking the visual of the house to the extent that we can and allowed by our bylaws, and direct the owner to call the dog when the dog barks, and, and if we're back here in 90 days or 120 days, we have some secondary solutions, but at this point, it sounds to me that that's, that's all we've got.
Well, I, I agree that that would be a good solution, but I also, I, I mean, I think at this point, it might be worth considering the board saying that the dog should be walking on a daily basis, that she should hire someone to walk the dog, maybe that would, you know, I don't see, you know, I don't see how things are gonna change unless we sort of add more than just a visual, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know, I mean, I just don't know if that will solve-
Yeah.
-this either, so, I mean, I think, I mean, I agree with, I think Mark has said this, I think Josh has said this basically as well, that the recommendation of the animal control officer, that makes sense to me as a starting point, to start with the fence, and, you know, encourage or, you know, ask the owner to be calling the dog in when the dog is barking, and hopefully we're not back.
I mean, the dog walker would be in favor of the dog.
Yeah.
I just think a daily walk, I don't know how expensive for an elderly woman, so, I mean, if you wanted to order a dog walker once a week, maybe it'd be 20 bucks, maybe it'd be, but, maybe, I don't, I don't know, because it's up to you guys.
I mean, I would check, because, you know, dump dogs, I, I mean, again, if I was a dog, would I wanna be walking every day? Yes, I wouldn't want a yard, I'd wanna, I would wanna wander around, and I think that, I, you know, I personally think dogs are happier when they're out exercising, and, you know, if the only exercise this dog is getting is barking, I would rather see if we could add something to the-
My dog's 14, gets a walk every day, and still barks at the coast in the yard, so I, I don't know if that'll do it. We, just talking about money, a six and a half foot, which is the rear setback limit, PVC fence, stockade, it's gonna cost a fortune, and if this lady doesn't have all the money, and I understand fixed income may not-
Yes.
-that's gonna be a real issue, and that's not gonna happen in, like, at least 60 days due to the weather, so I'm, I'm trying to think of other solutions that I, because I would not write off the fence, I think that that is probably where it's gonna come down to, but if, if there was, I, I would like to see them exchange phone numbers and have some sort of system in place, she needs to answer the phone, if, if the dog's out, gets a call, put the number on her phone, she needs the answer, we can't just say, can't rely on calling her son, there's gotta be a better way to do that, and that might be something that we can try for a bit, relying on her to do it on her own, doesn't seem like it's gonna happen, it's already been suggested, the neighborly thing to do would have been to take care of this once ago on your own, and, not that it shouldn't be on neighborly, but, you know, it's, it's hard, but there's a solution there too, there's something we can do there, because this, I, I feel like, I don't know how much this fence would cost, 10 grand, something crazy, so I, I, I feel a little uncomfortable ordering that for someone with fixed income, but there might be something-
I have a solution that will stop this whole conversation.
Thank you very much, you have, the animal control officer will hear your solution when the time comes, and when this board is done with this discourse. I don't see how, giving the number, like, if, if, you know, the owner of the dog is fearful of the neighbor, and the neighbor's calling, she's not gonna answer the phone.
I, well, then she can't have the dog, I don't, I, you have to, you have to do something, I don't, I don't think that Mr. Sullivan is going to-
This is like we're here, because not much is being done.
So that's why I would order the fence or the dog walking, because when you get a dog, you know there's expenses.
Yeah, I, you know, I, I'm gonna, I'm moving over to Josh's side, I think the first approach, because this isn't a, a dangerous dog, but it's a nuisance dog, ought to be that, that the dog owner needs to understand your dog is a nuisance, and you will get calls, and you must respond to the calls, and, and we try that first, we've gotta assume that our residents are going to be neighborly, as was said, or, or reasonable, if that does not work, the next steps are, I won't say draconic, but they're, they're expensive for certain, and they're gonna be things like dog walkers and big fences and things like that, but I think it's, the select board has the, the right, and what we ought to do is say, our first order is, neighbors be reasonable, do things that you're supposed to do, when your neighbor calls, answer the phone and pull your dog in, if you can't do that, the select board will do it for you, but so far, that has not happened, and if we think that can never happen, then we ought to just jump to the next expensive step, but what we've been told, I think we've been told, is that it's not happening because the current resident owner of the dog won't, doesn't answer the phone for other reasons, but if the answer is, you know, they need, she needs to understand, she must answer the phone and must pull the dog in, where things will get very difficult, very expensive, that's the answer, for me.
She would not answer the door from our police car.
I hear you, but-
Yeah.
She didn't see the car, I already asked her about that.
If, if we were in June, and this had been happening for almost a year, I would say something different, it's been, this fence isn't, a fence isn't going up for two months anyway, and that's why I'm, I'd like to see us try something else, but I, we need commitment that she's gonna answer the phone, and everyone, with everyone, all the neighbor's number, because everyone, anyone who's getting bothered by this should be able to call and say, take your dog in, and, and if that doesn't happen, I think we got a built-in time period where we need to see if it does, because the fence can't go up now anyway, so if that, and if the Sullivans come back to us in 60, 90 days and say it's exactly the same as it was, then we do something.
Can the phone number be given, can the phone number be given to all of the neighbors here tonight, so that they don't have to have words?
I, I need to say something about the situation.
I guess I'd like to say that the, the only person who said that, you know, we can't put a fence up now is the person who would have to pay for funds.
No, I, I know that, that's true.
Yeah, you can't-
I can't take it this time.
So, I mean, the way, the way there's been, I mean, it's been pretty warm.
It's actually, see, the top part of the ground is frozen.
I, I need to say something right now, please.
All right. Nope, you're done, no, you, you, there, you have no, nothing to share with this board, you haven't had an opportunity to share. You can meet with the animal control, after we make our decision, you can come up with all the solutions and give, and share them.
But if he's not gonna, we, we need to know now if he's, if he's not willing to do the phone number, because he wouldn't let me talk to him at the beginning, because that would be just a whole wasted notice.
No, I, I understand, give Mr. Sullivan my cell phone number.
He said there's no basis for the complaint, he said that the person who lives corners in the other corner is harassing the dog, I do not want to hear from him, he can, you can talk with him about the solution, but he's not, there's no way I'm gonna wanna take over this hearing.
I'm not asking to take over the hearing, I'm asking to have my side.
Yes, I think you are, I think you are, so, we would need a motion then, to determine what our response is gonna be for a dog that we've just found to be a nuisance.
I'll, I'll try to put something together, I'll make a motion that we direct the, the dog owner-
Yes.
-to respond to, to complaints or to, to communications from any of the neighbors about the dog barking, to pull the dog inside within two minutes from when, when the phone call comes in, and I'm saying that based on, they're not calling five seconds after the dog gets outside, so, you know-
I don't even have her number, so are you willing to give it?
You actually do, it's in the report, I saw it.
Then the dog, and, and, and if this isn't done, you know, we expect that the, the select board, in fact, I would ask as part of my motion, that our animal control officer check back in 60 days to see if this has helped alleviate the situation, and if it hasn't, then we'll take this back up and take a more substantial approach to, to the resolution, I think that, so, my motion is that we-
And I think we also just need to add that baseline of, she needs to call the dog in immediately when the dog's barking.
She does that now, right?
Right, right.
Before the call, you mean?
Yeah.
Before phone calls?
Yeah.
Yeah, before the phone call, and then the second step would be, if you get a phone call, then you would call, okay, that's-
Are you taking that as a friendly amendment?
Yeah, absolutely.
Friendly amendment.
Because I also just kind of feel comfortable putting all the onus on the neighbors-
Right.
-here, to, to trigger the, you know, the, the series of events, the first, you know, the first, you know, whatever, responsibility should be on her to call the dog in.
Right.
If that's not happening, then the neighbor has, you know, neighbor can call, and, yeah.
Right, and it would be a good faith effort to give the phone number to the neighbors.
I think it's part of the situation, we're ordering that the neighbors have the ability of contact, and that she, the owner, the homeowner would be instructed to answer the phone when the neighbors call, because if they don't answer, that's what our animal control officer, hey, I called and called and called, nobody answered, no dog, and that's what we wanna know, the next step, because, you're right, I think Josh is right, the next steps are gonna be expensive, one way or the other, either a fence or a dog walker, or something we, that I'm sure is gonna be difficult.
All right.
Mr. Chair, if I may-
Yes.
Just a point of procedure is to make sure all expectations are, are set according to how the statute works, there is not a provision in the statute that allows this board explicitly to revisit a past complaint.
Mm-hmm.
We have done that in the past, I believe, even in this community, with the agreement of the owner, I would point out, the owner is not here this evening, there's not an attorney here representing the owner, so I, I do not see a ironclad way of revisiting these particular complaints, what I would say is if daily barking continues to be an issue, there would, it would seem to be a subsequent complaint that could be the subject of a future hearing, but I, I just wanna point out that distinction, because I, I wouldn't want the neighbors to leave with the expectation that they would, that they don't need to make a subsequent complaint, I wouldn't want this board to make their decision with the expectation that they could reopen this matter without any further complaints.
Okay, so that if we thought that a, a privacy fence was essential, we should have it in this motion?
Well, that's one way to, one way to look at it, Mr. Chair, I, I would, I would say, I, I believe what the board is contemplating is, in response to a future complaint, the fence would, would be a remedial action, there having been a, a warning given in response to this particular complaint.
So if this doesn't remediate and help the problem, then we would ask the Sullivans or any of the other neighbors to make a subsequent complaint, and then we would have this knowledge of what we had tried, and then we could take the next steps, but we can't necessarily, we have to ask them to do it, the onus is still on them.
Okay, all right.
So there was a motion, but no second, do you want us to reiterate the motion?
I think that would be helpful, helpful at this point.
Lynn, do you have?
So what I have is, a motion was made to direct the dog owner to respond to communication from neighbors about the barking dog within two minutes, the select board will review this in 60 days, which sounds like can't do, the dog needs to be called in when barking without neighbors having to call it, and neighbors need to be provided with the dog owner's phone number.
Yeah, so I'd swap them around.
The order would be different, though.
Yeah, and, and I would also require that the neighbor's phone numbers be saved into the owner's phone, so she knows who's calling.
Doesn't have a cell phone, it's just a landline.
Better call her- Better call ID then.
So you need a second.
So we need a second on that motion?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay. All, all those in favor? Opposed? Okay. So we'll close. So that we'll move on to the next complaint, which is a, another hearing. Thank you, folks, for coming in. And this is a liquor license violation hearing. And we have a Long Meadow Police Report on compliance check, and maybe we'll, we'll start with that. Do we have a motion to open the liquor license hearing?
Yes. I make a motion to reopen the liquor license hearing.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? All right. Thank you, Officer Almeida.
Good evening, members of the board. I'm Officer Almeida with the Long Meadow Police Department. And today I am serving as an agent for the town through the Alcohol Beverage and Control Commission. And, yeah, any questions?
Okay. So we have your report here for Wednesday, November twenty ninth. And this is, I don't know if you want to give us an synopsis of the report in regards to Twin Hills Country Club?
I would, I would ask that the officer read the report into the record.
Yes, sir.
That way we have a formal entry of the.
On Wednesday, November twenty nine, twenty twenty-three, I, Officer Almeida, conducted alcohol compliance checks for the town of Long Meadow. Please note, on October eleventh, I received training on the Liquor Control Act taught by Investigator Christopher Temple of the Alcohol Beverage Control Commission. An underage operative, nineteen years old, voluntarily agreed to assist in compliance checks. Prior to the checks, the underage operative was briefed by Lieutenant Jerkowski and I on safety guidelines. The safety guidelines is set forth by the A B C C. The A B C C provided us safety guidelines form, and the form was read to the operative by Lieutenant Jerkowski. The operative was wearing a winter hat, black hoodie, tan cargo pants, and white sneakers, was given a twenty dollar bill from Lieutenant Jerkowski. The underage operative was also given a preliminary breath test before and after the compliance checks. Both readings revealed a zero, zero percent result. Please see the attached photos, the operative, twenty dollar bill, and P V T recordings. At approximately five P M., the underage operative and I began the compliance checks. Out of thirteen open businesses, with liquor licenses, two were failures. The following establishments failed. Twin Hills Country Club. At five eighteen P M., the operative entered the Twin Hills Country Club. Later, a Bud Light bottle was served by Isabella Lake. I spoke to managers Henry Benegas and Liam Kelly and informed them that an underage minor was served and to expect a follow-up from the town of Long Meadow. Second failure, Fletcher's Barbecue Shop and Steakhouse.
Why don't you talk to me and exchange numbers as you asked me to do in the hallway? She just walked out?
At six twelve P M., the operative entered Fletcher's. Later, a Bud Light bottle was served by Mariah Mansfield. I spoke to manager Alexandra Boucher, Boucher, and informed her that an underage minor was served and to expect a follow-up from the town of Long Meadow. All other establishments properly requested an I D. from the underage operative with, with no further issue. These establishments were Delaney's Market, Four Seasons Wines and Liquors, Long Meadow Package Store, Provisions Grapevine Pizzeria and Restaurant, Lee's Brothers, Long Meadow Country Club, Max Burger, Pasta, the Long Meadow Kitchen, and the Meeting House. Two businesses were closed. Clubhouse Cafe, formerly known as Franconia, and One Way Brewing. In addition, the bottle shop is not currently open. Please see all attached documents for further reference.
Okay. Thank you very much. So we'll, I guess we'll start with Twin Hills. Or is there any questions for Officer?
Mr. Chair, Fletcher's is actually scheduled first. Fletcher's is actually scheduled for the first hearing.
Okay. Okay. Sorry. Fletcher's is first scheduled. So do we have someone from Fletcher's to, why don't you step up? And so in terms of the report, I mean, the, the individual who served the minor, had they been certified and all that sort of thing?
First of all, we need to swear in the.
This is, this is just a point of order. Let's, Mr. Fletcher, do you stipulate to the facts that the officer just read into the record?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Then, then we don't need to take his testimony.
Okay. All right. Great. Thank you. And, and so, but the individual who made the serving would have been through tip certification?
Yes.
All right. So what do you have to say in terms of that?
It's extremely frustrating from an owner's perspective. I'd like to apologize to the board and town and the community at large. It's completely unacceptable. We have a policy that everyone who takes an alcohol order is tip certified, and that is, if that is the case, we stick to that policy. Mariah was tips, is tips certified. She was terminated immediately. That's a grounds for termination in our policy. And the policy really is, like, unless you know the person, unless it's your mother, like, we card everybody. Doesn't matter if the person looks eighty, you card them. And that, that's the policy in place. It's extremely frustrating as the owner. I've been running businesses selling alcohol for a dozen years, and this is the first time I've been in this situation. It's unacceptable. It's, you know, it's my shop. It's my responsibility. And, you know, when asked, like, why didn't you card the guy? Like, this is the rule. She says, I just, I was busy and I didn't. I just, you know, you're fired. But I take underage drinking extremely seriously. And it's a very frustrating moment for us.
Okay. Any questions?
No, I don't have a question. I'm just also disappointed, Mr. Fletcher. I mean, I clearly, when you were here looking for a liquor license or applying for a liquor license, I think the comment was, we will, we will do compliance testing. We don't want to see you here. And we did do compliance testing, and the first compliance test was a failure. And that's very, very problematic for me and, and I, I think for the, for the community. And I just wanted to just, just state that. And I recognize you've come in here, kind of fallen on your sword. It's not your standard operating procedure. And I don't know what you need to do to change your procedures, but I will certainly encourage you to redouble your training. Go get everybody again, tips trained, and let them know what you went through here tonight. Not just sitting here for an hour and a half or two hours, but that the select board read you the riot act. Because consider this being read the riot act. It's not acceptable for anybody in Long Meadow to serve underage people, in my opinion, and hopefully the opinion of the others on the select board. And so I think that's the message I want to go back, I want you to go back to your establishment with, that I don't ever want to see you here again, or see Fletcher's here again.
Understood.
And I think the other part of it is that, you know, your servers have to be able to cut people off too. If they, if they've reached a legal limit, you know, they have to make that assumption that they've met a legal limit and they have to cut them off because we don't want people driving drunk in town. And, and, you know, those two things are really, you know, you're, we count on you. You know, we, we are not going to be there, you know? I mean, we, so appreciate you coming in tonight. So we have to decide.
Tom, I, because we have a single hearing, I would ask that we conduct the other part of this hearing, and then we close the hearing, and then we can deliberate on each one separately.
Okay.
I'd rather do that because it is a hearing and we have the hearing open.
All right. So that we would now hear from the country club.
Can we do that?
I was under the understanding it was two separate hearings.
Oh, it's two separate hearings. Fine. I'll move with close the hearing.
All right. Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Okay. So now deliberation.
Need a vote.
You know, this is first offense.
No, vote to close it.
Oh, vote. Yeah, raise your hands. All those in favor closing the hearing. Sorry. Okay. The hearing's closed. And now, obviously Fletcher's is, is new to town. This is the first offense. So what do we, want to recommend a warning?
Tom, our, our policy is on a first offense as a warning. And my concern is that Fletcher's is oh-for-one. It's not a well, you know, a long-established organization or business in town. It's not a business that's been around. And, you know, they passed a whole bunch of times and failed one time. And gee, you know, let's cut them a break and give them a warning. That, that's kind of my take on it. Having said that, our policy is to issue a warning. I'm willing to do that. But I think it needs to be a, if it's possible, a stern warning, which is, this isn't going to happen again. I know that a warning's a warning. You get to walk out of here not, without having to close down your liquor sales at all. But I think that's where we're headed. I think that's where we should go.
Yes, Josh. I think that's a fair comment. Have the, with the compliance checks, do they slow down because of COVID? Has, it hasn't, there hasn't been one for a while. Is that correct, Officer Almeida?
It's correct.
Yeah. So, not to let them off the hook, but there hasn't been a lot of chances for that to happen, which I, I think is unfortunate. Because if you know you're getting tested, you already have the policy. If you know they might walk in at any time, then everyone's hopefully on higher alert. But I, since I've been here, we did Ume, we gave a pretty good suspension to. And none of us like to do it, but if it happens again, we'll do it. And it's, I know it's really tough on a business, but I, I represent liquor licensees all the time. And my clients are, they're mad as hell when their employees do it, but it's too late by then. So I hope you can, I hope you, taking decisive action was smart and it's unfortunate for that person. But I hope they learn a lesson and your other employees get spooked by that too. Because we don't want you back. Because we don't, then we have to do something stern.
Okay. Any other comments?
I'll make, I'll make a motion that we issue a formal warning to Fletcher's Barbecue for liquor license violation and hope that we don't see them again.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And they get something in the mail?
Yeah.
Okay. So you'll get a, the warning, the issue.
Close the warning.
Understood.
Okay. So our next is Twin Hills Country Club. We've already had the police report. If folks want to step up and.
I'll make a motion. We open the hearing for Twin Hills Country Club.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? Okay.
I, I know the, the question, which is going to be, we've had the officer read his testimony into the record for the, for the other proceeding. I, I think that you could find a way to.
Heard that, yeah.
Incorporate, you know, he could put a statement on the record that the report he read applies to this proceeding as well.
So you, but you want to just ask them if they agree?
Do, do you stipulate to the facts that Officer Almeida read in the, in the last hearing?
Yes, we do.
Excellent. Then we do not need to take their testimony.
Okay.
So I just have you state your names, just.
Anthony Cataropoly.
Okay.
This is Laura Chors.
Okay. All right. So the Twin Hills, I mean, I, I don't think we've ever had you folks in here before.
No.
And I think you've probably owned it for.
We've owned it for about fourteen years.
Fourteen years. Yeah. Okay. So you've, you've done well. And so what, what happened?
Well, yeah. So I, yeah, what happened was, I can tell you at least most of the part, the story here. So I understand, you know, what happened and everything is somebody came in. And just so you know, when it did happen, we, our facility was not open at the time. We were setting up for a banquet that was happening that night. So the place wasn't open. I mean, I guess they just came in because, you know, we had people in there setting up and getting ready for a banquet that's going to happen later that night. And so our regular people weren't there to do the.
Okay. Well, let him finish.
Okay, sorry. Yeah. Well, our regular people were there, but they weren't there, they were there setting up, you know, chairs and the, and the everything. And they weren't like, the bar wasn't open to the members or anything like that. We were, it was, it was closed. Okay? That, that I can, I can confirm. Door might have been open, but the place was closed. So, but I understand what he said. You know, yes, somebody did come in. From my understanding, they did sit down at the members' bar. And I'm not sure exactly, but my food and beverage manager, Laura, can maybe explain to more of what, how everything happened. But I just wanted to make sure that you knew that, you know, like you said before, we've owned the place for fourteen years, never been in front of the committee for anything like this before. You know, we do have, we do have, when we have parties like this, outside parties, we do card all the time, or we do wristbands too. And, and then when it's open for all the members, every member has a member number, and we have their picture come up when they order things. And so we have everything there to make sure this should not, never happen. Okay? And so I just wanted to say, yep, that's what, that's what happened when it happened. This happened. And, but I do want to say, you know, I understand, take full responsibility for what happened. If it was during regular business hours when we're open regularly, I know, I can't say I know, but this probably would have not, couldn't, wouldn't have happened because of how our procedures are at the time. So because of the timing, caught us off, I feel like, a little bit, but it still did happen. And we may, and the person that did serve was fired for this too, also, just so you know. And if there's any questions, Laura, Mr. Chors, she might be able to answer too, if I can't answer anything, if you want to ask her something.
Okay. So, but the officer, you wanted to.
Yes, sir. For the record, you stated that the business was closed at the time. There were other patrons at the bar, and there were other transactions taking place. And the gentleman, the underage operative who went in.
Yeah.
Ordered a beer and paid for it, which insinuates that the bar was open for business.
Paid for, all right, the bar was, that was the members' bar they were at?
Okay.
And so the bar, I, maybe.
The bar was closed at the time. We were closed at the time to members. It was a, excuse me, it's in off-season. I, I don't remember the day.
It was November.
November twenty-nine.
Yes, it was in an off-season, and we had closed already. We had been open earlier that day, but we were closed by four o'clock, I believe. What, what date of week was it?
Wednesday.
Wednesday, yeah. So I don't even think, but we might have been open all day. But we were closed by four o'clock.
Okay. Just based on my observations, there, there were other people at the bar. There was approximately ten people at the bar. They were playing similar, simulation golf in the back as well.
There might have been a group playing the simulators, but they're not, they were underage kids that were playing, they're members, playing on the simulator because they had some sort of tournament going on. But they, we did not serve them at the bar at all. You know, they were, but the bar was closed. The bar was, there was not any cash in the register. The bar was completely closed to the members.
Okay. Tom, let me get a stop. Go ahead, Jess. How did they, how did they pay?
He was given change.
I thought that, this is really bizarre. None of this makes sense.
The member bar was closed. So, yeah, it is bizarre that this happened. I'm sorry. She went, gave him the beer, and he paid, he put the money up. And so she had to go to the management, who, the assistant managers who were there, and get change at the bar.
Was she tra, was she tips trained?
Yes. Yeah.
All right. So you've gone along? It's been a long stretch without violations. It's just this one chick in the armor. And unfortunately, it got caught. Yes.
By, yeah, I haven't been to Twin Hills in a while. Do you card people generally? Do you rely on their membership photos? Or if somebody says I'm a member, here's my name.
Everybody has a member number.
Everybody has a member number. Yes, in the private. We would card if someone, if, if we didn't know, if someone didn't know the member. But you, we literally can go up to the P O S. system and see their age. Just plug their name in, and their age is right there. And I, it's very hard for anybody to, a child, a young, I don't know, an underage person.
It just happened. I mean, it's a big, this is a big failing.
Yes.
You should maybe consider if there's any other holes in your system. Because this is really, went out of their way to sell to, to an underage person. It's just kind of, it's hard to hear.
But it was like a fluke, I feel like, because we were closed. You have to, you know, if we were, I understand that it is our, that, I'm not saying that we, it was right. I understand. But what I'm saying is, we're open probably seventy percent of the year is, is our golf course is open, right? But in the wintertime, we're open occasionally for functions and stuff like that. So if there's a function, you know, we'll open up functions and stuff like that. So if there's a function, you know, we'll open up and we'll start getting it set up and everything. And then when the function comes in, that's when it's really open. You know what I'm saying? Like...
Also, the person who is involved here is not a typical bartender. She just happened to be there, and why she did it, I can't explain that. It's definitely, she was wrong, and that's why, you know, she's no longer there. But...
Okay. Mark?
Yeah, a couple of comments. One is, if somebody can walk in and get served, you're open. If you were closed, they should have been told, sorry, we're closed.
Yes.
You're right, yes.
Sorry, we're closed. So your comments that we're closed?
Yeah.
Ring very hollow for me, because you were closed. If you're closed, closed means closed, means we do not conduct business.
Right.
So you were open. And the fact that you were open and somebody was in there and purchased alcoholic beverage, was underage, says that there was a violation of the system.
Yes.
My concern about your process as described to me?
Yeah.
Is that you use member numbers. I'm a 19 or 20-year-old who has my parents' member number and walk in there and give you a member number.
No, you can give a member number. Your picture comes up on the screen, and we have the age of you, your spouse, your kids, the ages are on there. The date of birth, I should say, are on there. So we know who's, who's, your age.
And my second concern is that, you know, you serve both what I'll call members, which is more private.
Correct.
But you also have public functions.
Yes, we do. Yes.
And the public functions bring in people from...
From everywhere.
Everywhere.
Yeah.
And, and you may need a different procedure for both those...
We do. We have a different procedure.
And so my, my concern is that the procedure, I don't know whether it worked or not, but you know, since you believe you were, you were closed, and you obviously weren't, your policy of, you know, somebody walks in and wants a drink, or as the officer said, there are other people at the bar, if you're closed, you need to be closed.
Right. But those other people were not at the bar. Okay? They were on the simulator, which is next to the bar. They were not at the bar.
Fine. I, I hear your comments.
Okay.
I heard the officer's comments. All I'm telling you is that...
Okay. I understand.
If the, if the facility is closed...
If the door's unlocked.
If you believe the facility should be closed.
Correct.
And you're, closed means closed. Somebody walking in off the street should not be served.
You're right.
And it certainly wasn't worth the eight bucks or whatever it is you got for that beer.
Wasn't worth that at all, no.
So, I mean, that's, that's my concern, is that they're closed, they're closed, they clearly weren't closed, or somebody had an error in judgment. I'm gonna, you know, I'm, I'm as much concerned about Twin Hills Country Club as I am about anyplace else, only because, you know, it's, there's a, an implication that this is a private function, you know, it's, somebody rented out the place, and it's not open to the public. And I think your servers...
That wasn't, that's not what I'm saying.
No, no, in general, I think your servers need to understand that even when it's a rented-out function for whatever organization.
Right.
It is a public function.
Yes.
And everybody needs to be served. And so I, everybody needs to be...
No, I agree.
And I think your, your training needs to be re-reviewed.
See, I think though, I understand exactly what you're saying about that. So like, the function though, and you're right. And I'm not trying to like deflect it, but I just want to make sure that we're clear, that, that I, maybe I didn't, I miss, maybe I'm not speaking clearly enough or something, or I'm not getting my, not that I want to get my point, but I want to make sure that I'm clear of what I'm saying, that the function was not until later. So like to me, like, I get it. We're, so you're right.
If you didn't have your, your A-team, your well-trained, highly experienced, you know, well-organized, you know, people there who are running the liquor-serving program?
Yeah.
Then you should have been closed, closed. Sorry, we're closed. That's all you needed to say.
You're correct.
And if that's what you're explaining to me, when you say we're closed, we didn't have our regulars there who would, we believe would have done a better job, that's what I think you said.
Right.
Then the answer to me is, then you need to be closed. And I think that...
Right.
The issue for me is, you need to reiterate the...
I need to understand what closed is.
When you're closed.
That, that's it. You're correct.
That's all.
I understand that part, yeah. That's a, yeah, now I get it.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, then I think we'll look for a motion to close the hearing.
I'll move to close the hearing.
Second? Okay. All those in favor? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, you know, we, again, I think similar to the last, the recent hearing, you know, this is a first offense, and it sounds like a warning would be inherent. Do we need any further discussion, or some of them ready to make a motion?
I'll move that we give Twin Hills Country Club a warning for the November 29th, 2023 violation.
Okay, any second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor? Okay. All right. You'll get the warning in the mail.
Okay.
Please don't keep that here.
No.
Officer, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right. So I thank you, Officer, for coming in.
Sir, thank you.
All right. So we can return to the EverSource permit discussion. Again, we learned that the DPW's revoked the work, the roadwork trench permits issued to EverSource for winter work. And we have Sean Van Dusen here, and we were about to see if there was a representative for EverSource, and I believe they are, are they still here?
All of them.
Oh, okay. Well, do you folks want to step up, or you have one, you know?
Yeah, sure.
All right.
Yeah, Sean, why don't you move over to the side?
Does anyone have any other people to bring?
Okay. So I don't know if you were surprised when the town revoked the right for you to do winter trench permits, or did you kind of feel that that was going to happen after you looked at what happened?
Well, Mr. Chair, I think, I know last time we were here, probably some of these faces are familiar. If you want us to just introduce ourselves, that way you know who you're talking to today. So I actually am replacing the role of Joe Mitchell. He is no longer with the company. I'm now the community relations specialist for the town of Long Meadow, among other people. I'm not new to the company. I've been with them for almost five years, so.
And your name is?
Amy Henderson.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm Joe Martin. We met back in November, manager for field operations support, and I cover restoration.
Okay. Justin Violet. Was a construction supervisor. I've been in this area like about 10 years now, between being a contractor, working at Columbia Gas, and then now EverSource. And temporarily, I'm standing in for the manager.
Okay.
And I'm John Kane. I actually represent NPL Construction, who is a subcontractor for EverSource with regards to the gas pipeline work, not the restoration piece, but we are responsible for the same-day restoration that's being done. I think it's stuff that, since we are doing a lion's share of the work on behalf of EverSource, it was good for us to be here as well, to kind of communicate that and provide that.
Right. So, you know, there's been an unusual amount of work perhaps for EverSource in this town because of the, the gas line on Long Meadow Street and, and different things. Is there, I mean, would you agree that this has been more than usual, or is it kind of average? I don't know, I could be mistaken.
It's probably, it's probably seemed like a longer time. We've definitely been focusing more on the Long Meadow Street portion of it.
Okay.
I think for a while, we were more on the, we'll call it the back streets, kind of away from where you get a lot of traffic. So as of the past few years, and it does seem, when you drive down the road, it looks like one ongoing project. And really, from our standpoint, it's been one project that started, and then another one continues on from there. I know we've worked with the DPW in shifting some projects around, and per request of the police department, we've changed a few things throughout the year to try to accommodate school or other work that's been going on. But that still does not leave the patches that became an issue unnoticed, not here. Let's count that.
All right.
Yeah. On the patches, you know, and I think it was brought up earlier, those two patches, I think there was, you know, us as a contractor, we can take accountability for those patches that, that sunk. You can talk about a host of different environmental issues with the frost and the freeze cycle, but at the end of the day, the patches should have maintained a little bit sturdier. We since did make the repairs to those, but Sean Sean did allow us to get out there and correct a couple of those patches that were the, as you're turning, you know, onto Long Meadow Street there, to address those and clean up and sweep, and sweep those, to try to pick up some of the debris. We were trying to use a hot mix material that, that just wasn't able to hold up to the rigor that goes on on Long Meadow Street. So I think, you know, we did make some provisions to, to address those patches and, and any other ones that, you know, Sean has been in contact with, have tried to address those as well.
I want to just state that since the meeting in November, the communications is much better. They caught up in a lot of the patch work that they hadn't finished, that were, you know, under the requirements of the permits. So it had been much better. The, the recent pulling of permit wasn't a result of them, you know, not communicating or not, it was just a matter of bad work. Which almost is unrelated to the meeting we're having now, but it has, it has happened quite a bit. So I do want to say that communications is much better. They've been great about applying for permits, like calls them or anywhere they're working. If they happen to go 15 or 20 minutes beyond the permitted time, they call for approval. So I think things have been going better. It's just unfortunate how slow things have been going on on Long Meadow Street, and how long that temporary patch has been there without a permanent solution.
Okay. So, I mean, you, you know, our concern is, you know, that, you know, we represent the community. And, and so, you know, when we had situations where jobs weren't ending on time, you know, we were feeling like, oh, that's what's up with this, and it affects the police department and everything. And then, and now the situation with the patches, you know, we, we have to address it. And our big concern is that there's not going to be a third sort of a calling. And so one of our members has put together, you know, something he wants to present to the board. But I don't know if other people from the board have any questions for EverSource at this point, or...
That's a general question. We started talking about this a long time ago, so I don't remember. What brought this about? Is this Mark's motion brought this meeting about, or is there, is there an exciting event with Sean that brought this up?
So we do communicate a lot, but we also moderate quite a bit. So we've had two events in the last few weeks that required me to pull permits. So Amy is new and has reached out and wanted to meet with us, and Lynn and I suggested that they come in for the board, because it had already been the topic of discussion that was being brought up by Mark.
So pulling the permits is part of this? And you pulled the permits because...
No, so I mean, I wouldn't have necessarily told you guys I pulled the permits, so you would have told Lynn, but it wouldn't have come before the board. It just happened that EverSource wanted me to discuss the work that had been happening anyway. So, and Lynn, and Lynn, you know, I think communicated to...
I know, we heard.
Yeah. So it felt like it was an appropriate time to, to talk again.
Understood. Okay. All right, thank you.
Yes, very cool.
So November 6th, a couple of you were here before, and we were told the plan for 2024. And then a week later, the plan changed apparently. And I've got a copy in front of me of the, of the PowerPoint presentation, along with the, the list. But the plans changed. So my concern is, you know, how often do you get to change the plan, absent an emergency or something like that, is long-term capital projects that you're doing? And secondly, you know, why does EverSource believe that our requirements don't mean anything? Because clearly, you know, it's finish one job before you move to the other. And EverSource has consistently said, you know, last year at one point, there were probably three or four projects open at any one time throughout the town, and in fact, several of them were not, were never closed. And so I'm very concerned that we've got a situation where, you know, and I'll, Ms. Anderson, for your, for your purposes, I'll repeat what I said. You know, we spend millions of dollars every year on our roads. And yet Route 5, which is the main street through town, is a dump. It's a mess. It's damaging cars the other day. You know, that, that, you know, that just doesn't happen and shouldn't happen, and we won't let it happen. And my proposal here is to make sure that, and, and the reason I made this proposal is that, that, you know, you do one job, you do it well, you finish that job, and then you move on to another. But to have, and I recognize, gee, we can have five crews going at once. EverSource has proven that they're not effective of running five projects and closing them down. And then the town is left with five messes on, on our hands. This way, we say, do one project, finish it, and if you've verified that you can do that job right, we'll give you a permit for the next project. And when you do that right, you get the next project. And yes, I know you'd like to work five things at once, because that's how subcontractors work. But we can't afford to be left with five messes. It's bad enough we'd be left with one roadway not, not properly sealed or closed up, but not five. And I'm trying to give our DPW the backing they need, so that when people from EverSource, and it's probably not any of you four people, go in to talk to Sean, and maybe it is, or DPW, he's able, they're able to say, I've got the backing of, of the leadership, the administrative leadership of the town, not only the town manager, who I know supports him, but the select board, who also supports this, that EverSource must finish one job before they're allowed to go to the other. The second part of my proposal is that we find out what the plan really is. None of this, well, it's whatever we want to tell you tonight, because it's going to change tomorrow, because it did change the next week. That's just not acceptable. When we ask you for your plan, we expect to have your plan. And to say EverSource doesn't know, I can't believe it. It's a multi-billion dollar corporation. They know exactly what the plan is for, the capital plan is for the coming year, and it's probably been budgeted and, and already engineered. So to not tell us what the plan is was unacceptable to me. So it's those two things of having a mess on multiple roads throughout the town, and also being asked to have people come in here, come in here, sit and tell us a story that's literally not true a week later, drove me to, to get to this point. And I think the answer is, kind of clamp down and give, you know, let our DPW, our town manager, know why we're clamping down. Because in my opinion, EverSource and its subcontractors haven't proven themselves worthy of doing one project, doing it thoroughly, finishing the job before moving to the next. So I'm, I'm going to propose that what I put down here as a statement be entered into as a motion.
Okay. Yes.
Thank you. I, I just, I did want to get Lynn's take on, on Mark's motion, because it was my understanding that the DPW director, Sean, that you, you were able to stop this from happening. So I just fear that the select board, you know, might be, you know, overstepping, you know, our boundaries here. So I just want to be careful of that. But I certainly agree with what Mark is saying, and I, I feel the same way in terms of the roads. I mean, they're, they're terrible. But to Mark's motion that I read through, it concerns me as a board that we're going to be essentially micromanaging DPW to a certain extent. Maybe that's the wrong term, but I'd like to hear from Lynn and Sean.
I agree with the premise of a lot of the motion, and I think that it's, you know, I'm duly noting that the support is there, that behind the motion, the intent of it is to support the DPW. I think if it were a statement or a resolution, for lack of a better word, without so many deliverables or timelines in it, I think I would wholeheartedly support it. But I, I would rather be framed more of a statement in support of the work that DPW carries out.
I, I tend to agree, and I want to pivot back to the changing of the timeline and the schedule. When we met with EverSource after that meeting, we saw that they had believed they had been permitted for things that they weren't permitted for. And we pivoted back to the initials, I think, statement I had before, which we were only going to let one project happen at a time. And that one project that's going to happen has got to be the, the finishing of Long Meadow Street, because we have another project coming, and it's been going on far too long. So I think that we are already working towards that. I think we are allowing the winter work to take place on Long Meadow Street, so we could get the permanent patch. It's unfortunate that the work they were doing didn't hold up, and now we're stuck having this unfinished road further into another year in the spring, when it had been my hope that it had finished far sooner. So I agree with Mark and what he said. I think that the deliverables and the, and the time and the specificity might be a little too much. I think you have no more than two permits. We're only letting them have one permit. That's it. One permitted time, they got to finish. And that, that job is Long Meadow Street. Nothing else is going to happen. The rest of their capital plan is irrelevant, because we still don't know when they're going to finish Long Meadow Street. And the entirety of that road has to be ripped up and had concrete put back in it, another patch, and then the full patch. So they have a lot of work left that, there, and I don't know how long it's going to take. But I think that's what we really should be asking them tonight, is when they're going to be able to finish that road. to be able to finish that road.
Really? Any other...
So when is the road going to be finished?
If you want to speak to that, your portion of the...
Yeah, so the asphalt plants obviously are closed at the moment, right? We expect them to open end of March, early April. And the full intent is to get back on Long Meadow Street and complete the concrete restoration, the full-depth repair, followed by your eight-foot mill and pave requirement, working with DPW and engineering to ensure that we meet the specifications for the specific roadway. The trench moves, the line striping changes, we deal with different scenarios like crosswalks and sidewalks, so want to make sure that we meet all those needs. But we fully intend to get out there as soon as the asphalt plants open end of March.
Can you put a date on the answer?
Not just the asphalt plants. Also, they need to be able to plate the road in order to do all the concrete work, drill and pin. It's got to stay plated for a couple days. This time of year, you can't run the risk of plating seventy-five feet of roadway to find out that it's only forty or fifty degrees for a couple days.
We wouldn't allow it.
Right. So just that kind of factors into the timeframe as to when they can start that final restoration. It's not just, I don't want it to just be left on the asphalt plants. We have the ability to get hot mix. We travel an hour and fifteen minutes to an hour and a half to go get it. But it's not necessarily just the asphalt.
I think the frustration of Mark's, you're here for the board meeting, is also that we met with EverSource a dozen times to discuss the concrete work and what was required. And we've met with the contractor that's going to be doing the concrete work. So the fact that now we're in the middle of winter and it wasn't done last year is just not acceptable.
Yeah.
You know? And not only that, but the condition of the road and those patches make it that we have to use more salt, that road's more prone to ice. We've been lucky we haven't had a bad winter, but it does pose a danger. So I think you can definitely hear everyone's frustration in the room, and we want to get it done. Because we have a water main project that's going to be running up Long Meadow Street, and we're going to run into you guys, so we... Trust me, I didn't want to pull the permit.
No, I understand. And I think it is important, too, as far as the outstanding restoration. We also have nineteen services left, though, on that rockier part on the north end that have, the laterals that have to be run. You know, I think it would be in the best interest to adhere to kind of more of a firmer date as soon as the asphalt plant is open, if we could, with proper concessions, be able to do those nineteen services sooner rather than later, because that will then expedite the final restoration.
You've got to understand our fear that you're going to not fix the road.
Yeah, totally understand that. And I think that, you know, from a contractor, through EverSource's perspective, I don't want to overspeak on their behalf either, but I can tell you, you know, we are going to make the concession. We had used the material previously. It's held up numerous times. It didn't hold up. We'll own that. We'll take accountability for that. We will travel if we are given the opportunity to go do those remaining nineteen services. We will travel that extra time, use our hot box to be able to maintain the heat and temperature that needs to be. We'll bring a roller out. We'll take additional special considerations to make sure that we have that. I think we also, you know, I think we were in the interest of trying to get the work done. We probably went out there a couple days prior and before, you know, that we shouldn't have. And I think we probably should have communicated that better and said, hey, the reason we're trying to snag an extra service to move up the timeline.
No, you guys were great. I got a text every morning I knew where you guys were going.
But so I just think we, I think we can do a better job of looking at the forecast and recognizing that you have a potential for a frost even if the storm's coming in, and then articulating that delay, why we may take a two, three-day pause to ensure that if a storm comes during that. But I think to being able to allow Joe's team to then come in and finish it, the sooner we could get those nineteen services done, and I think there are, again, I don't want to overspeak, but there is another project, Emerson, that would require main lines to come across. So maybe we'd have the opportunity to stub those, and again, I don't want to overspeak for engineering, but the opportunity to do the nineteen services, potentially put those stubs, and then allow the team to do, I think would be in the best interest of Long Meadow to then start moving forward on that.
But you guys haven't given a date when you think that Long Meadow Street's going to be done yet. So you don't know when it's...
So I don't want to overspeak because I don't want to presume we have that. I mean, I'll tell you, those services are, if we have good weather, it's one service a day.
But what about the main and the paving?
So understood completely for that. Emerson, if you would like, assume, if you'd like us to get off, we could complete that by March.
For our side of the gas work.
For our side of the gas work.
But not the paving.
The paving, no.
So we would start...
We want to look at our road back, you know?
Yeah.
Right. So we'll start as soon as the asphalt plants are open.
But when will the work be done?
So there's really no way to tell until we get out there and open the road again. I mean, you said it yourself, the concrete work is going to take time, like we know.
But you guys didn't, well, we haven't figured it out on a much better basis now that we have schedules, but to that end, I need a schedule. So we need to know, because we're going to run into you guys on our water main project. Now we're going to have a real big problem because I can't have a change order on that existing water main project. It's going to be on Long Meadow. So I'm kind of caught, not want to let you guys go open the road back up, but the work's got to get done.
So if you assume best-case scenario, no weather, no staff shortages, you know, all these things that we can't control, how long would that work take you on Long Meadow Street?
So I'll need to go out and do a full schedule for you to really understand the scope for each individual area, because we're talking about Long Meadow Street as a whole. But from my side, it's four separate projects.
Sure.
So I'll break it down and provide you a schedule. We moved fairly quickly when we started in the fall.
Right.
If we have good weather, I presume that it's going to move fairly quickly again in the spring. I don't see any risks of us completing the work and doing it well. It's just understanding exactly what's out there and when we're going to actually start depends on the weather and the asphalt plant.
Route 5 is obviously the main thoroughfare through Long Meadow. I mean, I've been, there are times where you folks got it, your construction's got it down to one lane, and, you know, it's a mess, and it's always there between six-thirty and seven-thirty in the morning, because you think you're getting an early start, and that's when rush hour is, and it's the biggest mess in the world there. I mean, cars are backed up to, you know, through the whole town because of that. And I don't know if, Sean, part of what you do is understanding, you know, when we can say, look, we want, we need our both lanes, need both directions open during, you know, the four-thirty to six o'clock timeframe in the evening, and from the, you know, probably six-thirty till seven-thirty, eight o'clock in the morning. Because it's a mess.
It is a part of the permitting process now.
Okay. I mean, the other part is that, you know, again, it's the schedule issue, you know, and that's one of the things that we were asking. You know, I don't like being lied to. I don't like being lied to when somebody comes and it wasn't you, but somebody comes before us at a select board meeting and says, here's the projects we're doing. There was nothing true about that. Maybe those were four of the projects they were doing, but it wasn't the projects. My ire, my annoyance, comes from, we ask you to come in here, tell us what you're doing. We want to be a partner with EverSource. Don't feel you're trying to get away with something, slip something past Long Meadow. Our residents see it, they're living it, the cars are backed up in it. Tell us the truth. And that was the reason I got so involved, is to say, Sean, you don't give them any permits until they give you a schedule. And then we can help you to the schedule. And if, you know, if the schedule changes because it rained, because there's a problem, because you can't get equipment, let's talk about revising the schedule. But we're not going to say, we only have three roads we want to open, and oh, we decide to open two more or three more. That doesn't do it for me. Tell us the truth.
I think the permitting process partly was our fault for not having that, those schedules in place two years ago, and I started, I can tell you, we addressed them now. There's just not going to happen anymore the way it did last year in the last two years.
So when's the L project supposed to start?
Our water main project's going to start in April.
Okay. So any chance this is done before April?
No.
That, no. We can, the asphalt plant will probably open the first week in April. If the weather continues as it is now, hopefully middle of March.
And you can't tell us whether it's going to take a month or two months or...
We can, we can start at that end. If we have some flexibility, we can coordinate you with where the crews start so we can work ahead of the water main instead of working other areas of the town.
We're going to be, we need to get our contract excluded with the contractor to get their schedule, but I don't know where they're...
Sure. And I think as far as the schedule goes for restoration in the fall, we did provide you with a schedule for the south end, and we were able to stick to that. So I think...
The south end isn't done, by the way. There's all these cross strips that are still nine inches, and you drive south from Maple Road to Long Meadow to Connecticut Line, it's going bump, bump, bump.
That's the concrete work you're talking about.
That's what we're talking about. We need to finish that.
Yeah.
Now, Mark Gold brought up a good point. And the south end of Long Meadow Street, you know, you do a good job trying to get traffic through.
Where do you live?
No, I live right there, and I had a, they let me in on my driveway. But that is, it's like so light. I mean, the traffic there is pretty intense, but when you start working on the north part of Long Meadow Street, between Bliss and the entrance to ninety-one, there's going to be a lot of complaints. And it might be best done after schools are out of session, to tell you the truth. But you need to be able to be prepared for a lot more traffic. I mean, it is not, it's no joke. I mean, that thing gets backed up without any construction. And then if you have any construction in that last mile or half mile before, between, you know, as people get to ninety-one, it's going to be tough.
We're all done on that. End of it. We're all done from ninety-one to where, kind of where we are now. So we don't have to go any closer.
Right, just the paving needs to start there.
Right, right. But I mean, as far as new gas construction's concerned, so our new gas construction...
So that section from Route ninety-one by Forest Park?
Like where Forest Park is, yeah.
You've done all the way down to Bliss?
Not to Bliss.
Not quite to Bliss yet, but...
To the bank. I apologize.
Yeah, to the bank. Basically, right, that's where you guys are now with those services.
The final restoration's complete.
Where the old community market was.
Community.
Oh, that's not very far.
Right, but we've already gone through the traffic thing. It's, I think we did also offer possible work at night if that would ease the burden, and I know that that can bring on different challenges as well, but I think, yeah.
Yeah, like the neighbors calling us.
It's a different, it's a different reason.
I think it brings on a sense of where we recognize the impact that that has and anything we can do to lessen that burden. I think the other thing, you know, I know we talked about it from a construction standpoint is to be mindful of is, we also want, we don't want to prolong it anymore, so we can do it in forty-foot increments.
Yeah.
All that does is just continue to kind of delay the process, too. So I don't know if maybe that's something, which we're happy to adjust to that, you know, we can talk about that as well. Well, again, the main work is undone, so it's just the laterals at this point. But in the future, on any other highly-traveled roads, I think that'd be a good practice for us to work with Sean and Lynn's office on how we can do that.
We'll have the schedule as part of your permit.
Absolutely.
We also, for, as far as the concrete, the full-depth restoration goes, you know, that's, that's another scenario that's unique to Long Meadow. I know, we've talked about it briefly. You also have the opportunity to remove the concrete requirement, which we don't do anywhere else, but I understand that's something you want to keep, so that has to remain part of the schedule.
So that is one other, they're correct. Not every single disney requires the concrete to be ripped out and added, but we do to make sure that the base stays like base, so it doesn't need differently. So it is an extra cost, and it is a lot more time.
Sean, one of the things, if you recall, that I had suggested, in fact, with the L project, is rather than have that thing stretch out that we, you know, look in, maybe we close the road for three weeks and really do the job right.
So all public safety, we'll meet with the contractor, and we'll go through all...
That's your call.
Yeah, it will, maybe multiple people and individuals will be discussing that, but yes.
You know, it's a major route every morning, as Tom said, every morning, every afternoon. I'm willing to defer to the DPW. I'm just concerned that in the past, that, you know, we've gotten to where we are because, maybe because you didn't have the procedures in place, we didn't have these things in place. But I think EverSource needs to understand that it's not acceptable, what's been going on. And I feel like a broken record, because I think, I said the same thing in November, November 6th, and here we are, three months later.
Yeah, and we hear you. And we, as you said, we want to be a partner with the community. We want to coordinate, and we want to do what's best for the community. We know that we're guests in your community and that when we're here, it's disruptive. And so, you know, we want to coordinate with Sean, we want to coordinate with Lynn, we want to, we want to do better. And, you know, that's what I hope we're relaying to you, and I know it's hard to hear again, seeing as, you know, you saw some of us only a few months ago, but we do want to work with you. We want to be better. We want to be good neighbors and really be good partners with the town of Long Meadow.
All right. Well, thanks. Because it is on Main Street, yes.
And what I assume you don't want to do is get hauled in front of us and listen to a dog hearing for an hour. It's going to keep happening.
We'll make sure of it.
Yeah, we'll schedule it that way. But, yeah, I don't want, I don't want a hamstring, DPW, and that's, that's my only concern reading this, is Sean's got to do what he's got to do, and I know you're doing a good job keeping them on task, and we'll bring it back if we have to.
But Josh, on the other hand, you know, I mean, I worked in a major corporation, and the first thing, when there was an error or something happened, they say, what are you going to do differently? And I have not heard a single word about whatever source is going to do differently so that we're not back here in ninety days. That's what I expected to hear tonight. You know, we tried this, we tried this, but we're going, here's what, it's business as usual for EverSource. And I hate to say this to the select board, but just be prepared for them to be here in another ninety days, because there's nothing changing. Nobody's come back and said, here's what we're going to do differently. So what you need to hear is, we're going to do things differently because you aren't. And that's going to be painful to EverSource. And I apologize in advance, but had you come back and said, we're going to do things differently, maybe we wouldn't have had to. So Sean, get tough, because it's business as usual for EverSource. That's my take on it.
We did say that we're going to travel further to get hot mix, they're going to get a roller, we're going to do some things differently with that. You know, the restoration department's a little more involved now with the final restoration, trying to be that much closer behind us in the projects going forward. I will follow up. I wasn't here at the last meeting. I'm very curious as to what projects they told you were going to do, and then a couple weeks later, we changed that.
Sean, can you, I'll give you that.
Yeah, I'm not really sure. Usually, I haven't been involved in Long Meadow for probably like four or five years now as much. But just to find out what changes happened, because typically, we don't make those kind of changes, aside from if an encroachment or something happens, which was part of what happened in Farmington, the water line went in, it then put our gas main in a very dangerous situation. We had no choice but to replace it. That was not a planned project for us this year. We had no intentions of doing that work this year. We did that last minute. So that was a change in our plan, but that was not something that was brought on at EverSource decided last minute, hey, let's go do this project. But I will, I will look into finding out like what happened and why you guys aren't getting a consistent schedule that the DPW and the select board can work with to make sure that our work goes accordingly with your work, because...
Thank you very much.
That's part of being a good partner.
And I think with the Gantt charts and stuff that we started recently, by the staging areas that was addressed at the November meeting, I think, so I think that's also a good takeaway for us, is we can continue to provide that through Sean, and then any other things that, you know, the select board or through Lynn's office may want to see specifically. Because I think we have made some behind-the-scenes improvements, but to your point, not necessarily visible at large. But I, I know we all watched the meeting, you know, from Justin and I, I should say, weren't here at the last one. And, and I think we kind of walked away. And, and I think we kind of walked away, we, we understood your concerns from where we sat, and that's why it was important, I, I appreciated the opportunity to kind of come represent with them, because, you know, we're a partner with them and then, you know, guests in your community, so I do think we have tried to start with Sean, and Sean probably is annoyed, I text him all the time.
No, I'd rather have it, but we, we also meet, have started after the communication problems with the last, in November, we had set up monthly meetings to go over every project and what the schedules are going to be. So we, we have made some strides, obviously, some of the stuff we're dealing with now is just stuff that we had let go prior, and I don't think it will be happening again.
All right, well, great, I, I think this is a productive meeting, I appreciate you folks coming down.
Thank you very much for coming.
Sean, it's great for you, um, you know, to know, I, hopefully you know we're behind you and so forth. As far as this proposal, it's not unusual for the select board to, to get a motion like this, uh, in one meeting and then we'll discuss it in a second meeting, so why don't we?
Well, well, let's defer.
We wait, we can always bring it up in a future meeting, talk more about it, decide if we want to do something with it, unless, does that sound, you know?
I've got, with me.
Said acting on it tonight, but, uh, but this will help us in our future discussions, so thank you very much for coming.
We appreciate you taking the time, we know we're really on the dock.
I'm available for walking dogs if you need.
Watch what you ask for, you might just get it.
Twenty dollars an hour was quoted in the year.
Yeah, yeah, they get twenty, fifteen, twenty bucks an hour.
Per dog?
So, um, you know, we have a few other things on the agenda here, but we have some folks who are waiting, who are here for a specific, uh, agenda item under new business, which is a, um, a, a, appeal for a tree hearing, um, how would you guys feel about moving it up the agenda?
Go right ahead.
Yeah, okay, so if you want to move up here, um, just introduce yourself, give your name and your address, um, and we have a letter for you, Mr. Fitzgerald. Okay. And so, um.
Is this, was this previously provided?
Perhaps, if, you may already have all of that information.
The only thing I received was the cover, cover letter and then also the memo provided by Leah, who I'm also meeting as panelists now.
All right, so if you just want to introduce yourself and.
Okay.
Give us your address and your.
Good evening, my name is William Fitzgerald, I live at sixty-two Fairway, Fairway Drive, Long Meadow, Mass. I'm also the owner of the property at seven twenty-three Shaker Road, which is a legally conforming, single-family building lot. I am joined tonight by Tim Lucier and Jen Wilson. Um, the property is currently under contract for sale to Tim and Jen. Tim and Jen grew up in Long Meadow, they're graduates of Long Meadow High School, they respect the town, they want to return to town and construct a home on this property. They intend to construct a ranch-style home, which is consistent with the neighborhood, and the construction of the home will result in new tax revenue for the town. Tim and I first met informally with the town tree warden, Leah Grigorov, on January twelfth. At that time, we told Ms. Grigorov that we were looking to remove all growth within the tree belt and presented her with an arborist report by Wayne Otani of Long Meadow, a certified arborist. Ms. Grigorov instructed us as to the requirements for a formal hearing, and procedures were followed for conformity to the law. We contracted with a, a surveyor to delineate the tree belt, trees in the tree belt were appropriately marked by Ms. Grigorov, and legal notices were published prior to the hearing. We held the hearing on January twenty-fifth, and at that time, Ms. Grigorov informed us that she was in possession of an email from Dr. David Marinelli of nine Overbrook Drive. Dr. Marinelli's email spoke in opposition to the removal of the two oak trees marked as numbers one and two on the second page of the Otani report in front of you. That should be a panoramic, uh, shot of the land, and, um, uh, it would be wider than what you're looking at. Certainly the, certainly the, um, the tree marked number, number one is the one to the left of that group of shrubs. And then the tree marked number two is to the far right of that group of shrubs, all the way down the street there. That's number, that's number one, there's number two. That's number one, and to the right of it is number two. Ms. Grigorov informed us that she was, um, approving our request to remove the evergreen cluster marked as number three in the Otani report, that was that large clump that we previously just saw. And that she was denying us the removal of the cedar tree marked as number four in the Otani report, that's to the far left. As for the, as for the oak trees, Mr., Ms. Grigorov said that the existence of a lone email from Mr. Marinelli requires her to deny us the right to remove the two oak trees under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter eighty-seven, Section four. Under MGL eighty-seven four, our only recourse to this decision is requesting an appeal of the decision to the select board. This was an, this was unfortunate, as it removed the opportunity for compromise with Ms. Grigorov, and it is the reason which brings us before the select board tonight. In preparing for tonight's meeting, I met with the four immediate, um, uh, putters of the property. That would be six ninety-nine, which you see the car in the driveway to the left, that would be seven thirty-seven, which is the neighbor to the far right, and, uh, then directly across from that center clu-, uh, cluster of evergreens is the, um, uh, are the two neighbors that face the property, or that, whose properties face both Tedford Drive and Shaker Road, um, and they have Tedford Drive addresses. In front of you, uh, marked petition is, um, the signature of those eight homeowners, and those eight homeowners, uh, stipulated that they had no objection to the removal of all the growth in the tree belt. There was one stipulation, the, um, the homeowner at six ninety-nine Shaker Road, uh, stipulated that they would like the cedar to remain, and we have no objection to the, um, cedar remaining. So tonight's, um, tonight's, uh, meeting boils down to really these, these two oak trees, uh, marked one and two in the Otani report. In preparation for tonight's meeting, um, Mrs., Ms. Grigorov prepared a memo of her findings and recommendations to the select board. In item number one, she speaks to the oak tree marked number two, uh, in item number one of her memo, she speaks to the tree marked number two in the Otani report. Ms. Grigorov memo concludes that although this tree will be additionally damaged due to the extension of an underground electric line, uh, she felt that the tree should, uh, remain. That, that conclusion is in opposition to Mr. Otani's opinion, which states that this tree should be removed because of its obvious state of decay. If you look at the, uh, at the pictures, there's, uh, holes in, in the, um, there's a hole, a large hole in that tree, and, um, and then the tree is right on top of the electric line, um, and we, and Mr. Lucier will be bringing underground electric across that tree, through those shrubs, across that tree, uh, to the house. That will disturb the root system of the tree, uh, causing it further, um, uh, further damage and impairment. I would also say that this tree is, is, um, it is, uh, um, this tree has also been marked by Northern Tree Service in an assignment for Eversource. And, uh, to, to, as a tree to be removed because of its, um, threat to the power lines. I signed a document with, with Northern Tree Service as they were moving through the, um, permissioning stage of, uh, that room, that tree to be removed, and, um, uh, and that tree, along with trees to the right at the next two houses up the street, and trees down the street are, um, uh, are, are, of, of a number of trees that have been marked by Eversource for removal because of the threat to the power lines. I would also add that I think that tree is a threat not only to the subject property, but to the neighbor next door. So we feel that the present and future condition of this tree poses a threat to seven twenty-three Shaker Road, as well as seven thirty-seven Shaker Road, uh, as I said, it's been marked by, um, Northern Tree, uh, at, at instruction by Eversource. And we feel that the, uh, the loss of this tree will be insignificant to the immediate canopy, um, uh, due to the existence of significant canopy on the other side of the street. The, uh, subject side of the street does not have, um, does not have sidewalks, uh, the other side of the street does have sidewalks, there are, there is canopy for those sidewalks, and there's canopy, uh, for the, um, the thoroughfare as well. In Ms. Grigorov's memo, item number two, she makes a conclusion that may be a typographical error. I spoke to, um, Ms. Grigorov, um, uh, later this afternoon. If you go down to about page, about to line eleven on her memo in number two, where it starts with the, um, the word dying, there's a sentence there that is confusing, where she says that the tree could either remain or stay. And when I was, spoke to her on the phone, she clarified that, to say that, um, she meant to say that, that, uh, she was ambivalent about, about that, that tree, we're now talking about the tree on the left side of this photograph, um, and, uh, she was ambivalent about that tree, and that tree could either, uh, could either not remain or stay, but remain or be removed. To the left of that tree, and noted in the, um, Otani photograph, uh, the very first photograph, you'll see a ribbon hanging down, or if you go to photograph where the tree is marked number one in the Otani report, you'll see the, um, the headline, water line, and the location of the, um, the water line as it comes onto the property, um, as it comes onto the property is right at the edge of the cluster, and then the sewer line is to the right of that, and, um, there's a potential for a gas line to come on the property, uh, um, to the, to the right of that as well. And these lines will cause for excavation, uh, in and around that tree, further, um, further jeopardizing its, uh, its condition, and, um, uh, in light of the future effect of the tree and the fact that the tree has also been marked by Northern Tree Service, again, for removal, as requested by Everest, Eversource, due to its condition, to the, uh, threat of safety to power lines, um, we're asking, uh, that this tree be removed too. And, uh, that's about all I can, all I can think of to say right now. We're looking, the, it was unfortunate that, for the entire town, only one person, um, made a note to protest the removal of these two trees, and, um, uh, the, the, the chapter and section require, um, uh, require, uh, our denial and, and mandate that we meet, uh, with the Board of Selectmen to, uh, get a decision, and that's, um, that's where we are. It also took away the opportunity for any form of compromise, um, with regards to those two oak trees. Tim, do you have anything to, to add?
My name's Tim Lucier, grew up in the town, as you mentioned. The, the tree to the, next to number two or one, that's the edge of the right of property where the telephone pole is, to run the service to the proposed, uh, home, it's within two feet of the base of that tree, and it's going to do damage to the life of that tree. It's going to last probably two, two more years, and then, you know, say, half the tree dead, and then three years, four years, the tree's dead. I mean, I don't, I'm just, it happened at my last house, I tried saving the tree.
Tim's not looking to leave the property denuded either. Um, Tim has a history of owning property with trees, at one time he owned Bluebird Acres. He has a plan for the house, he has a plan for trees in the front of the, in the front of the house, uh, to generate a, um, a screen for the house, it's just that this time, these trees will be on the land of the property owner and not on the tree belt. And, um, uh, it's a wide tree belt, the town has, uh, the water main, uh, does not go down the middle of Shaker Road, the water main goes in that tree belt. So it's not like, it's not like there's some things that can, uh, easily be changed here, and there's no desire to have the entrance to the property be directly perpendicular to, um, to Tedford Drive, and moving, moving the entrance to the property to the, to the left-hand side of the property brings, um, the potential to jeopardize the cedar tree that Ms. Grigorov would like us to retain, the neighbor would like us to retain. So it's really the right-hand side of the property is to where the driveway entrance is, makes everybody happy, um, it's just that there are, and, and is not a financial burden to Tim building the house, because the utilities are on that side, and it's just that the, um, the oak tree in the, in the middle is a, um, another tree that's, that's going to be negatively impacted by that excavation, and it hangs over the power line, it does not have, um, much in the way of, um, uh, of a, of a canopy, that's an amenity to this area of the property. It's been trimmed, it has, it has, um, uh, dead, uh, dead limbs, um, it's, uh, it should be, it, it should be something, it should, it should be removed, and we feel it should be removed, and there's opportunity to plant more trees on the property in a location that is suitable to Mr. Lucier when he builds the house.
Okay.
Can I add one more thing?
Sure, yeah.
That tree, that next to the telephone pole's got a cavity, a whole, about, you know, about twelve inches across.
Right, yeah.
And there's a whole family of squirrels living in there, and I saw, I can't get a picture of one because they go in and out, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know, it's just, that's not healthy.
It's usually, I don't know, raccoons will live in places like that, yeah. Um, so this is fairly unusual, um, Mark, do you have?
I was just wondering if we could hear from the tree warden, Ms. Grigorov, she's on, on the line, I'd like to just.
Have we, we've never, have you ever had to deal with, had an appeal to this, on trees? No, I would say, this is due territory, so we, uh, we have our tree warden here, um, Leah, um, so we got your report, and I don't know if you have anything to add, or, um, you know, I guess part of it is, um, Mr. Sullivan, um, or Fitzgerald, referenced, um, a statute that says if there's a complaintant that, um, things have to, the trees have to remain, is that accurate then?
If there's a, the statute says is that the tree warden doesn't have the authority to order a shade tree, uh, removed unless the select board, uh, authorizes the removal.
Okay, and what about the complaintant?
That's different from what, how we've been operating.
I have a copy of.
The statute we, we operate under is that, that, that the tree warden has the authority to, but if there is an objection by a citizen, any citizen.
Would you like a copy of the?
I assume, I assume I got it, right? If there's an objection by a citizen, tree wardens obligated to, to.
Is it, is there a local bylaw?
Yeah.
Okay, so, I, I'm just looking at section four of chapter eighty-seven, which is what I think we're talking about.
Yep.
So tree wardens shall not cut down or remove or grant a permit for the cutting down or removal of a public shade tree if at or before a public hearing, as provided in the preceding section, objection in writing is made by one or more persons, unless such cutting or removal or permit to cut or remove is approved by the selectman or by the mayor.
Right, so what it says is that, that we're the appeal, but the, the way this read reads is, I think, what, you know, what we've got from Mr. Fitzgerald, that, that what we've heard is that the tree warden conducts a hearing, it's, it's supposed to be posted on the tree, it's supposed to, all this kind of stuff, right? And if anybody objects, the tree warden says, there's an objection, we can't cut it down. If you want to override that objection, you must go to the select first board, which is what you're doing, and that's what this, the way this reads.
And the tree warden objects.
That's what she said, right.
Yeah.
I think we all agree. But that's not what he said, he said the select board can.
If denied.
Right, right, the, the tree warden doesn't have the authority to permit a tree to be, a shade tree.
If there's an objection.
If there's an objection, which here there was, which is why, which is why we're here.
Okay, I, I didn't hear the, if there's an objection.
All right, so, uh, Leah, you know, we, would you want to make some comments on, um, you know, we, we have a report, and then he said there might have been a, an error in the way it was written, and do you want to, um, tell us how you feel about these three trees?
Uh, Leah, you're.
You're still muted.
You're muted.
You're muted.
You're muted.
Oh, wait. Are you in the-
Can we send her her thing to unmute? Ask her if that, ask to unmute. Good. Thank you.
Was it star six or star nine?
Yeah. It's, it's-
You had it for a second.
She's on her phone.
You did ask to unmute and then it changed to mute. I think that might've worked.
Yes.
There we go.
How about that?
There you go.
Yeah, yes, we have some-
All right. Okay, great. Sorry for that. Um, so, uh, we can start with the, we can go in order of the trees in, as I've written in the memo, so the one that's being projected on the screen right now. Um, I think that I kind of captured, um, everything that I want to reiterate in the memo there. I think that the argument for this tree to be removed, um, is, is a tough call to make. I do understand that there is a cavity that's about 15 feet up where the, uh, branch union is. Um, I, I think without getting up there and looking in it, I don't think that it can be conclusively stated that that's affecting the tree health. Um, oak trees are known to habit wildlife, insects, lots of different things. They're known to be durable and to, um, you know, be able to withstand certain, um, you know, elements and they do chow over fairly well, which you can kind of see that from image. Um, you can see around the outside of the cavity, there's quite a bit of, um, wooden wood that sealed it over. Um, not to say that that makes it, you know, resistant to all disease and infection, however, um, it's showing signs of doing what it's supposed to do in, in covering up that cavity. Um, and with regards to the excavation to access the utility line there, I do feel as though that we could, um, you know, work around that in a way where, yes, there's got to be a level of excavation and it's going to be a little bit of impact in the root system. Uh, but in the end, I, I think that that could be done in a way that saves this tree. Um, the argument that was made by the requestor for the denial of the removal was that this tree provides a lot of shade, um, it provides canopy cover. Uh, as you can see, some of the shadows on the road, a lot of those trees will help contribute with that. Um, the biggest focus is, uh, reducing, uh, urban heat islands, um, which is more attractive, the heat's more attractive towards the surfaces like the road right there. So although there isn't a sidewalk there, which people would be walking underneath, the tree does provide shade to the road, um, which is something that I would consider in terms of keeping the tree. Um, all of the branches have been pruned in a way that are above the utility lines at this point. Um, I drove around with Ever Source earlier this week and we looked at some of the other trees on their circuit, similar to this one. And, um, you know, it would have the pruning of the stocker that's been within a certain distance of the utility line. So, um, I did meet with Don Tease from Northern Tree Company who we currently contract with, um, in terms of other tree-related work to look at these two oaks specifically. Um, his, uh, agree, he was in agreement with me on this tree that, you know, we can't quite hash out that, um, that cavity from the ground and say that that, that certainly caused things, the tree to go. Um, so that would be my feedback on that one. Um, if we want to move to the next oak tree, what I found about this one and upon a little bit of extra research today, there's, um, the utility line for the sewer connection, um, is not exactly in line with what it's flagged at in the field. On the road, there's a manhole cover, um, that shows the sewer to be a little bit further towards the evergreen bushes rather than towards the, um, oak tree. So, uh, you know, there is the opportunity, you know, there is still going to be excavation. There will still be some root impact. However, I don't, I can't definitively say, you know, if the tree, if the excavation was within feet of the tree, I think that's a different story than, um, if it was pushed further out. Um, the branching attachment on this tree is a little bit more compromised. There is the meter that goes over the, the property. Um, you know, I don't think that at this exact moment, it's a high risk. Um, you know, it, it could definitely be placed on the watch list. It's one of those, um, in my opinion, if we pruned that meter off, it wouldn't need much less to the tree. It's a significant sized, uh, branch coming off. Um, you know, that would definitely compromise the tree and would, it would have a very tough time recovering from that. So that's where I stood on this tree. Um, I do think that if this tree were to be approved by the select board for removal, that any kind of mitigation should be replanting on town property, whether that be at the specific site or some sort of donation of funds to the tree planting, um, funds allow, allow for off-site mitigation. Uh, again, I think it provides a lot of shade. It's kind of tough to tell right now. There are some dead branches, but oaks are notorious for if they find a branch that they're, they find no longer useful, they'll shut that branch off from the rest of the tree and drop it. Uh, you can see that in a couple of different, if you could see that in the field right now, I have, um, some images of that, that, um, you know, that exists. So, you know, there are some other branches up top that certainly are dead wood that are not fall, that don't fall under that category, but, um, there are some others that do, uh, which can be deceiving that at the first look. And then for the eastern red cedar, my opinion on that one, it kind of seems like we might be okay with leaving that one, but, um, it, we don't have a lot of those in town. It's, it's unique. It provides diversity. It promotes, uh, a different type of habitat. Um, I know unfortunately, I don't know who pruned it, but of course it's now pruned to look the way that it does, but, um, you know, it's still something we don't have. And I think that if we replace that tree and ultimately if we need to replace any of these trees that are approved for removal, benefits provided by a mature tree are significantly, substantially higher than saplings. A sapling survival rate is very low. It would require a lot of attention to them and I, um, I think that ultimately keeping these trees would be the most beneficial if we could work around that. However, that's just my opinion.
Leah, thank you very much. Any members of the board have a question? Any questions? Yeah, Mark on?
No, I, I, I think the consensus is the 29-inch eastern red cedar would be, would remain. I think that's-
Yeah.
-what Mr. Fitzgerald-
We don't have a problem with that.
So we're talking about the two black oak trees, the 30 and 32-inch. I, uh, you know, I, I mean, I have, I have an opinion, but I, I, I think it, you know, let me share. I, I think that, that trees have a natural life and, and sometimes the natural life isn't 100 years. Uh, I don't know what the natural life of these is, but we are a city, the city of trees. We were at least at one point designated that. I'd like to keep trees, but I like to encourage, encourage development. And so, you know, as, as despite the comments that our tree warden, Leah had commented about the, the replacement and mitigation, I think that's a, an appropriate direction to go in my understanding. And Leah can, can correct me if I'm wrong, is from what I've heard, learned, is that we mitigate through circumference. So if these trees have a 30-inch circumference, then what we want to do is replace it with trees that have a, a sum of 30 inches in circumference. That, you know, and, you know, my take is that I'd like to propose that we kill two birds with one stone. One is that these folks want to develop their property, you know, frankly, I think that, you know, if you dig up the, the ground, you know, I mean, you know, Mr. Lucier's probably right. Maybe it's a couple of years, three years, four years, tree's going to die anyway. So, or may suffer. I'd like to do something like a two-for-one or three-for-one replacement in kind. The, the town has needs for, we can, we can use hundreds and hundreds of trees around town. I'd certainly like to see a couple of them go on this property, but I'd like to see the, you know, the, the resolution be, you know, green law metal. And so, you know, I did some quick math here, 30-inch tree and a 32-inch tree are 60, 62 inches. And if it's a, you know, two, two, three to one, that's, that's a dozen or 18 trees kind of thing is, is all we're talking about. And to plant 18 trees around town, two of which are here, might be a splitting the baby kind of approach that we want to take if, if it's okay with the development.
Well, I mean, trees, I've seen oak trees 400 years old. You know, I mean, they get pretty good size. I mean, it's amazing how big they can get. If one has, Fred has one in his yard. Uh, Mike, uh, could you just do a scan around like, like you did earlier? So if you, if you spin all the way down, so you, you look at these trees, you look down, you see all the large trees and then go to the left.
But notice they don't have wires, Tom.
And you see all the big trees there and you keep going to the left, big trees, keep going all the way around, 360. There's trees all the way around here. And so I look at the size of a lot that's 165 feet wide, 200 feet deep. There's a lot of room there. And to say that these oak trees, these black oak trees, there's no place for them is a hard sell for me. I, I'm just not going to buy it. I think our, our, uh, our tree warden said, you know, we can make some, uh, some changes. You know, they're shade trees, they're on town property. It may require moving a driveway. Um, I know it's inconvenient to have your driveway across the street from a street like Tedford. I can understand that. But I still think that to grow oak trees like that takes a long time and I would say that I would support, uh, Mr. Manelli, who's our former tree warden, um, in that they should not be removed, that the plans for the development should be adjusted. That's my first reaction. I went and looked at the property also. Yeah.
Um, yeah, I'd like to ask Mr. Fitzgerald. You mentioned, um, that you wish that you had an opportunity to talk about a compromise. What did you have in mind as a compromise?
Something along the lines of what Mr. Gold said. Uh, the, the, the letter from the one, in a town of 15,000 people, the letter from the, the one person takes everything out of the tree warden's hands. So we, we just have to go right here tonight and-
Right. So, so mitigation in terms of buying other trees for the town?
I, you know, I, I, if, I don't know if anybody's got a, a number. I guess that's what it boils down to. I will say that the, I thought the law was curious in that, um, if we break the law, the fine is $500. If we, you know, we're, we'll pay more than $500 to, for, for this, um, for this compromise. But it's like, this law like almost promotes violation of law. Uh, um, we're not looking to do that whatsoever, but it's just like a, a crazy thing.
Uh, we, I will say the last case to interpret this particular statute, I think, is 1939. So, uh-
I think it was written when lawyers didn't get paid by the hour. It's the shortest-
I've never had a fine for cutting trees down.
It's the shortest, it's the shortest statute I've ever seen.
And I'd like to ask our tree warden, um, this mitigation plan, I mean, obviously there's a cost to removing trees from this area. Um, can you just speak a little bit to that kind of, you know, cost benefit analysis?
Yep. Um, so what I was considering was, uh, with regards to the removal of the tree, um, I did look at what North Hampton and their tree ordinance requires in terms of replacement and replanting. So in an instant where, um, you know, a tree isn't necessarily required to come down for public safety, but yet a resident, you know, in a, in a similar situation would like to see it come down, um, they typically would require a two and a half to one inch diameter at breath tight replacement. So this tree is 30 inches D V H. That would require what, 75 inches of tree replacement. So, um, you know, I'm also understanding, I understand the reason behind that is, is the low survivability rate and the likelihood of a lot of these trees and saplings that are planted not making it, not being planted correctly, maybe wrong tree, wrong place. Um, so in consideration of that and the understanding that, um, this tree could in theory pose a hardship, um, I, I had suggested to do the 30 inches replacement, so a one-to-one. Um, I did meet with the Springfield tree warden today, or the Springfield assistant tree warden, and, um, he kind of briefed me on what they do. And they also suggest a one-to-one replacement in this scenario. So that's where those figures came from.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, and then for tree number one, I think the tree warden mentioned that, you know, we could keep the tree if we, if the design could be drawn to avoid locating structures underneath? What does the current design-
I don't, I didn't see that. I'm not clear about that. So tree number one in Ms. Grigoroff's memo?
The tree on the far right.
Is the one on the far right.
Right, right. But I'm talking about your tree number one.
My tree number one is Ms. Grigoroff's number two, where, um, on the, on the right-hand side of the evergreens is, um, a water shut-off bell.
Yeah, we're disconnected in 2007, so you're going to have to tie back into this one, according to my records. Did you guys call?
There's a blue, something's painted, the water, she dug up a little bit.
Did you guys call for, uh, for a mark out by us?
No.
Because I haven't seen any plans.
Sean, can you, so people from the home can hear you. This isn't for you.
So you're, you're saying that that, that shut-off has been disconnected?
So all I have from 2007 is saying that you guys are disconnected. So you'll have to run a new line and reconnect to the, um, yeah.
But the, but the, but the, the water main is in the, in the tree belt.
Right. But you could run the water main anywhere.
It's only three feet from the water main.
And the sewer, and the sewer lines is in between the tree and the evergreen.
So the sewer line that you would have to connect to is actually in the manhole in the road from what we have for records?
Yeah, but there's a stub on the property.
But, yeah, um, but, so I don't, I don't know that you would be able to connect anymore. We don't have a record of it. Um, so I would have loved to have gotten a, a call for a mark out and saw the plans to this prior to the meeting.
I was waiting to see if we could get this approved or something.
We presented it up to Ms. Grigoroff. Right. But I, I would just say that I don't know that I agree that you can't run power and get, uh, water and sewer there with, and I, I think you can go around the trees, that's, to a great extent. But I haven't seen where your house is going to be, what the layout looks like. I haven't met with your contractor yet.
He's the contractor.
So, yeah, I mean-
It's like, driveway's three feet from that tree. And it's like, you know, pull out, you're going to look at a tree and somebody's going to clock it pulling down the driveway. You can make a mistake very easily, in my mind. I don't know.
So normally I would ask for the curb cutting, all the plans, I'm sorry. Um, so we would be able to say, yeah, these trees got to come out because you got the driveway here and the water line's here. I just feel that this is a little bit reversed.
Well, if you take another peek at that tree, the way, there's a nice view at it. See that leader that's hanging over the lot? That's hanging over the, the house because that tree is actually 24 feet from the curb.
But just because there's a limb hanging over a house doesn't mean it is a hazard necessarily.
No, no, I know, but if you prune that tree, because Ever Source has already been pruning this side, there's nothing left. That's what you, that's what Leah-
Right. I, but I just, I guess I'm just saying I wish I'd seen the plans and, um, because I, maybe some of those were, they're avoided, but I-
Well, we don't have a, an extensive set of plans.
So you're going to cut trees down without a set of plans for our house?
No, we have, we shared this with, we shared this with-
Paul Smith did that.
With Paul Healy, the building inspector.
Right.
He didn't have a, a problem with it.
So I, you would have to get a, a permit for a driveway for me.
Curb cut.
And at that time we would have, I know, utility mark out so we could verify everything. All I had, I found, I pulled these today, but it just shows that you guys disconnected in 2007.
And that's the next step after we can, you know?
Yeah, we wanted to get past that.
I don't want to buy a lot.
So, Sean, just so-
With a tree hanging over the top of my house.
So the board is clear. You're saying that they can access water and sewer at various points along the 166th property?
I, I, at least the water, but I would want to look at the length of the house.
Right. He's answering the question.
I mean, you could always pull in the stub. You can always pull-
You're correct.
So the lines can be moved.
Lines can be moved. Okay.
You know, you have to put it up on the other pole. You get on time to it.
So for, your opinion is that it's not so specific that it has to be within the tree range? The trees are-
I don't know. I need to, I would need to see the plans.
You don't know at this point?
But it would seem as though some of the, some of the utilities can be moved.
Just in, in one question. So what we're trying to do with the property in the frontage is keep that cedar tree on that side.
Right.
So we don't want to, we don't want to be coming in on that side of the property.
Right.
The clump of evergreens are the dead center of the property facing Tedford Drive. We don't want to come in on that side of the property.
Right.
We want to come in on the right-hand side of the property.
Right. I, 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 this is all conjecture on my part. I don't know. I don't know if there's a way to look at it and say, can we move it three, four feet away and then not damage the root structure? Or if we have no choice but to damage the root structure, I think that's an easier, um, sort of ability for me to give my opinion and say, there's no other way to access the property. This tree has to come out because we have to dig those roots out. roots out. That's different than coming and saying, oh, these gotta come out because there's all these conflicts. Because I don't even know what the conflicts are, I haven't seen the plan.
Okay, thank you. Because that's, that's, the board should needs to know that. Yes.
Yeah, I, I wish we, I, I, we don't do a lot of these hearings. I wish we had gotten this information before. And obviously, the town could have gotten, if we'd gotten some input from DPW, that would have been helpful. Because it's one thing for us to say, yeah, we can take it out because it's gonna get knocked down by the sewer's gonna get killed anyway. But if it's not going to, same, we may still vote to knock it down. But I wanna know our reasons why, and I wanna have all the information at hand. And this is helpful, but it was, you know, we, we were looking at this fresh tonight. And if we had had a, more of a chance, and if Shaun could have come in here prepared to say, yeah, we can stub in here, then it, it would change things. I, just, my, my personal thought is, the, the tree in the middle, I, I see what you're saying. If it's, it does look pretty scraggly, which is a technical term, I think. And that, that big branch, if that's hanging over the front of the yard, you may not want that. The tree to the right, that's one I'd really like to know more about with the, the cut tying in. There's a tree right next to it, though, which does mitigate, but that's, that's my thoughts, I want information.
I'm just seeing, when you cut, because when you put conduit in the ground, you're gonna be going right to the root system.
Well, if that's the only place to put conduit.
And that's what I wanna know. And, and also, I, now...
Well, that's what it transforms, I guess.
You make a, you make a plan, the plan, you work with what you have, rather than having what, working the trees around it. That's maybe. So, I, I'm not, I haven't made up my mind why or the other, but I, I don't think we have enough information tonight.
Okay. I mean, yes, Marco.
Josh, I, I hear what you're saying. My concern about the tree on the far right, which is the 32-inch tree, I believe, is that, my opinion is, Eversource has, has already done a job on it, and will continue to. And anybody who doesn't believe what, what our friends do to protect the, the wires, need only drive down Williams Street or Bliss Road and see these trees that are, are destroyed. And, and, and the fact is that, if we were to put a tree there now, we wouldn't put it there because of its proximity to the tree just to the south of it. That, that there's already a tree in the tree belt, the south of it. So, you know, from my perspective, both of these trees, you know, aren't serving a great deal of purpose on this property. And Eversource is probably gonna take one of them down, and the other one may or may not be good. And, and the opportunity to get a multiple replacement within the community is something I'm really interested in, because I was here during the 2011 storm, and we know how many trees came down, and we know the deficit of replanting trees. You know, my intent would be to put the financial burden on the developer and the owner, so that the town walks away financially free and with a couple of dozen more trees spread around town, a couple of which are on, on this property. To me, that, that is something that, that works because of our, you know, I mean, we're constantly looking at the forestry budget, saying, we don't have enough money to plant, we don't have enough money to plant, and we wanna be able to plant, here's an opportunity to be able to do it. Do we wanna take down these quote-unquote mature trees? If they were great trees, no. If they were 100-year-old trees, no. But these aren't gonna be around to be 100 years old, because Eversource will make sure they aren't. Because they, they're right over the wires, and that's the biggest problem.
Did you go on to see them?
Yeah, I went, I went up there.
Okay. All right. I didn't see them next, I didn't think they're that close to the wires. I think that they're...
They're, they're right near the wires.
I think they're far enough back, they have a good, usually if you look at the canopy, if they have a full canopy, they have a full set of roots. And for me, those trees have a decent canopy, they give a lot of shade, they're on town property. But I hear your argument about needing trees in town, you know. I don't know what other people think. Do you think you have enough information? Do you wanna...
Well, it also helped to know if, you know, we had a commitment for planting more trees in town, like, and a mitigation plan.
Yeah, I'm gonna plant probably 20 trees on that lot, just to, you know, to buffer everything, you know. If you guys need some to replace them as you, as, you know...
With DPW, I know we've got a long list of places where we need trees, right?
You can probably condition whatever you did to make sure that you do.
Yeah. Leah, did you have any other things to add to discussion, or...
My only thing is that I would encourage, if there are approvals for removal, that mitigation for the specific removals be done on town property. I think if we're taking 30 or 62 inches from town property, we should be replacing that on town property as well. So that's my two cents on that. You know, if approvals, the removals are approved, and mitigation plantings on the specific lot in the frontage are also a requirement. I certainly wanna work with the homeowner in regards to species and, and location relative to the utilities, as well, you know, underground and above ground, because we don't wanna be back here in so many years. And now we've got two more mature trees that are, you know, 10 feet away from the utility wires. At this height, you know, we would wanna make sure that stuff that goes in and stuff that's not ever gonna really get to the utility wires.
Okay, thank you.
Tom, I, I'll make a motion. I think that, I'll move that we authorize the removal of the 30-inch and the 32-inch black oak trees contingent upon the replacement of, or planting of 180 inches circumference of replacement or mitigated trees on town tree belts, at least one of which must be on this property, ideally two. And the others to be planted in a location and a species that are approved by the DPW and the tree warden.
Okay. And so, if, so we make a motion, and then if it's approved, then they still have the choice to either keep the trees or do the remediation.
That's...
Can I ask one question?
Go right ahead.
Does anybody have any input as to the cost of however many inches of tree that might be?
The most recent DPW purchase of trees was a one and a half inch diameter tree at $220 per tree.
So 220? What's, what's the, what's the math on 220 times X?
Uh, 120. That's five inches, so if I said 180 inches, that's 35 trees, something like that.
I mean, in dollar, in dollar amount?
Take 35 times whatever Leah gave you for her figure.
Come up with a number, one, one to three.
She just said one to three inch. But, well, I multiply, she said diameter, I'm using circumference. So, I multiplied it by pi, 3.1, you know, so I took one and a half inches times 3.1, that's about five inches.
I can't follow.
It's a five-inch circumference, let's give or take a five-inch circumference. I'm just doing it off the top of my head. I mean, I'm, you can sit down here and do the math, but it's about a five-inch circumference tree.
So Leah, is fi, is it five inches divided by, what was your total number of inches? Six, is it 62, or is it more than 62 inches?
Why?
Yeah, she said 62.
So, yeah, I think it's 62 for the sum of the two trees. If you wanted to go the two and a half of that, it would be, it'd be 155 inches.
Right.
And then at 1.5 inches per tree, one second.
Did you say 220 bucks?
Yeah, 220 per tree.
That's town prices.
No, I know.
180 inches is $26,400.
How, how much?
180 inches diameter.
So moneyless?
So it's 120, 120 trees times 220.
So, 26,000?
But it's 220 per 1.5 inches of tree.
Yeah, so that's, that's 26 grand.
220 per 1.5, so 220 divided by 1.5 is 146, times 62, I get $9,000.
What, where did the, oh, the 62. I was doing 180, which is what the motion said.
No, 180 inches.
Can we just make like, an agreement to like, $5,000 towards a tree fund or something? I think we need to be specific.
No, because then, then, then the town incurs a lot of costs getting the money from the tree fund into the ground.
And, and then I take down them trees, I pay to have them take down.
Well, you're gonna take them, pay to take them down anyway, if you want them down.
Okay, I didn't, I thought...
Correct.
Town's not gonna take down trees.
So, Mr. Levine, I, based on that, that math from Leah, I get that, and you got the same?
Yeah, but I don't, I, I'm not really involved.
I got $9,093.33.
I don't know if we were working with different numbers. Anyway, we're not doing it, we're not giving you a dollar.
Plus install, that's the other thing, plus the install, that's not just the trees.
You want me to say, I'll, I'll say 35 trees, that's what it comes down to. 35, it comes down to 38.3 trees.
So I'm just trying to get, I'm just trying to get it in my head. So, so...
It's, it's 7, 7,500 bucks.
Plus install, so it's not just the purchase of trees.
Right. It's plus installation. But they're not paying town prop, town prices.
I just would like to agree to something, I would like to agree to a known rather than an unknown.
Not for buying the trees.
But for installing as prevailing wage.
Not paying town prices for buying the trees.
I would just like to agree to a known rather than an unknown.
I hear you.
I understand, but you're asking us to cut down our trees.
And we don't have a space.
I know that, but I just, I'm just trying to get an understanding of the math. And you came up with $26,000, and I came up with nine, so...
I said it was an English major.
I would like to say too, that I think it would be more valuable in the sense of coming in and going into the tree fund, rather than, you know, having the resident have to go find these spots to plant them. And, you know, with that communication between me and, and the property owner, the property person...
They don't, they don't have to find the spots.
You know, I think it would save demand.
I don't want to. It'd be hard.
They're not gonna find the spots, but I just don't want the town to incur costs. And I know that if money goes into the tree fund, the town incurs costs, that's the problem. My goal is to find a compromise here, that, you know, we're spending a half a million dollars on a property and a house, another couple thousand bucks for trees, and get you what you want.
$7,000 to build a house like that, or...
Whatever it is.
It's spent enough. The windows are 40 grand now.
Right, so, so, that's my, my point is that, pardon the language, this is chunk change relative to what it does, and it helps us resolve the issue of trees in the town. And, and Tom, I hear you about what you're saying. I'm just concerned, because I've seen what Eversource does. Because if they say they wanna cut that tree down, we can't stop them. And they will wanna cut those trees or trim them to, with an inch of their life. And we, we have no authority over Eversource, and so my...
We do, actually. We go through every single tree, know where to cut.
But they do it.
But, yeah, but we have, we go through and meet with them, and they look at every single tree in town properties. They're not just cut.
Right.
Historically, they might have...
I can't say, last, last Monday, I did drive around with Eversource, because they're coming in for a circuit, and they asked me for two. And I said, you know what, I'd really rather not. If, and it is a requirement, they said, nope, we'll leave them. So, I think that with me being here now and me, I did, I asked them to sign me up for their circuit notification, so I know where they are going every day. Not to say that I'm gonna dig further than and drive around and watch them all day long, but, you know, I'm, I'm gonna be aware of where they are, and I'm gonna reach out to them if things need to be addressed.
All right. I just have one, one final question, Leah. Are these, those pictures from four and a half years ago, are the, if you can see it on your screen, I don't know. Is that what the trees are planted now?
No, it looks like they're planted.
Well, I can't really tell, it's not quite the same angle.
It's a little bit more dead range. I saw that tree somewhere, it's like a wind burst or something.
It's hard to know, though, you can compare it to.
Some of those branches, and then you can, you know, in the yard.
Tom, you could, it seems like there's a lot of unanswered questions here. You could postpone or continue this hearing. I'm sure they wanna close, but it, you know, you've got another meeting in two weeks. Gather some more information and then make a determination then.
Could we close the public hearing and then make a decision?
Well, we didn't... There is no...
Oh, that's true.
What more information are we gonna get?
Well, we could figure out how much the, the trees would cost, if they could replace, if they don't keep these trees, what it's gonna cost to replace them. And then we also could figure out, hopefully, what, how many, what different places they have access for water and sewer that wouldn't interfere with the trees, if that's important to people, I don't know. Is there anything else people wanna know?
Well, I'm sure.
Is there anything else you wanna know?
Well, I, I wanna know, because if they talk, and Shaun says, at least one of these is coming down, or it's, it's gonna last two years after you do it, our decision is made for us, and then that's what we should do. But I just, I wanna know, partially because it makes it easier, but partially because I think it's important to have the information on it.
Okay. First time we've done this, might as well do it right. Great.
So what information are you gonna get? The cost of trees?
That's number one.
How many trees?
How many trees, cost of trees.
Well, how many tree, no, the question is how many?
Yeah, we may have to measure the circumference, I don't know if she...
No, I know what that is, I just figured it out.
I mean, I developed many condo projects, we usually put two and a half inch trees on the side of the road.
She said it's...
They're more durable.
Right.
You know, not inch and a half, those are definitely, you know...
Right. Well, again, it, you know, it depends on the percentage of survival of newly planted trees, and what size we'd have to get to guarantee that what they would survive. I mean, you know, I planted trees, and I've had several, I've had a lot of trees die.
So it's 23 trees, if they're two and a half inch trees. That's the cost, okay?
Those are usually about 200, if I get them from my supplier consistently.
Right.
Jason, how many inches are you working with?
So, can I just clarify?
Yes.
Something, what's different here is, in these types of situations, I'm not sure that we've had DPW have someone drop trees off to us. Generally, we would have them make a donation in the amount that you set, and we would buy them through our distributor, because we, we know that what we're getting, we vetted the whole thing. So I just wanna clarify, if you're going down that road, what are we asking for? I'm, I'm really confused of what you guys are, what direction you're going here, and I think we need some clarity.
Well, I don't think anybody else is asking, great. What I'm recommending, in the motion that I made, is that the, the developer be responsible for purchasing and planting 23 trees at two and a half inches in diameter around the town of Long Middle on the tree belt. That, that's maybe the clarification I'll put in. 23 trees, two and a half inches in diameter, at a, at a location and a species to be determined by the DPW and the tree warden. And the cost of the trees and planting to be borne by the, by the contractor. So we have a number of trees, we have a size of the tree, you, you suggested the two and a half inches, that's fine.
I'm just saying, they don't, they don't fall over.
Yeah, if they're, if they're 2.35, nobody's gonna come after you, you know. But if they're, if they're quarter inch saplings, that doesn't...
No, you don't like that.
Right, so...
And then, the tree warden suggested that this would work better if we were putting money to, or we were asking to put money to the tree fund, right?
Or we just invoice.
So, 23 trees, and Leo, would you say 225 was your number? Was that your number?
That was for a one and a half.
220 was the one for the 1.5 inch tall for trees, I would need to go back and look at the most recent invoice for a two and a half inch or...
At 220 dollars.
I don't know that I'm wrong.
These 23 trees are two and a half inches.
If you buy 20 of them, they're gonna be cheaper.
Okay.
Well, I think at this point, we should get our numbers right. You know, we spent a lot of time on this. You guys can think it over, also, you can do your numbers, get in touch with Leah, and then, you know, we'll just talk about it next meeting, I guess. I mean, because unless you guys...
And get more information from Shaun, if Shaun gets a chance to go out and take a look at it.
All right. I mean, if there's...
I mean, is that, is that reasonable? Okay, okay, yeah.
Is that where we're at?
Yep.
Okay. All right, and that's where we're at. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you for the motion to continue.
We could take a motion to continue this hearing.
You should table it to a date certain.
Date and time certain, yeah. It would be nice to get the evidence agreed on the record.
Here, Tim.
Yeah.
Table is for February 20.
It's that our date?
Yeah.
Yep.
At 7:30 P M. Okay, 7:30 P M. On the 20th, a motion to continue this hearing regarding the appeal of the tree hearing by the town tree warden. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor? All right. So, we'll see on the 20th.
So we'll be last again, listening to a dog hearing?
No, you're 7:30.
Oh, yeah. Hopefully, we'll, maybe earlier on the agenda.
But there may be a dog hearing.
I believe the barking's gonna start again tomorrow.
I don't think there'll be any big things. Okay, so, now we're next to the Citizen of the Year award policy.
Thank you, Leah.
And, oh, yes, Leah, thank you.
Sorry, I wanted to one more thing, but I can hang up.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
The Mass Trails Grant?
Oh, yeah. Mass Trails Grant is what Leah's still here for.
Ten D. What do I have her?
Do we still have Ian on?
Oh, jeez.
And Erica.
And, yeah.
Ten D, let us support the Trails Grant. Okay. Yeah, let's look at this letter and this is very exciting. I mean, all these years on the board, I've always hoped that we could do something with Trails, so who's proposing this?
So Leah is here to speak and asking your support of this letter. It's an application that they're putting forward.
I don't think we need her to speak. I think we should just make a motion to approve the letter.
Yeah, it looks great. Looks great. Thank you.
I'm not being facetious.
We want to move forward. We've all read the letter.
Yeah.
Now, I'll move that we sign the Mass, the letter in support of the Mass Trails Grant.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? No? Great idea. Hopefully they can give us some money. I, I trip over roots all the time when I run on the Trails.
We need to vote.
We need to take a vote. Yes, all those in favor? Okay, thank you. All right.
Good night.
Yeah, you're welcome. All right. So now we go back to the, the.
Here, should, should we do the, should we do the finance director update? Because.
Are we gonna go?
Because Ian's still on.
Ian's still on? Well, we could go to the quarterly, the citizen of the year award, we can have more time on it. So it's, it's only ten thirty, so let's try to.
The lights go off at eleven.
Let's go to the quarterly report, the quarterly investment report. Why don't we start with that?
Erica's on too.
Who, who do I pass it off to? Erica is here?
Yeah, she's moving in Erica now. She should be.
She's awake.
Hello?
Saturday evening, can you hear me?
Yes, yeah. Sorry we're so late.
That's okay. So before you tonight to submit my quarterly report on the status of the town's cash and investments for the period ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. As per the investment policy, the town held no long-term investments that exceeded the five-year limit. The individual bank balances were under the twenty million dollar balance provision. All banks received the highest A C rating of green from Bear Bank except Newbury Port, which received a yellow rating. And all accounts are fully insured and secured. The second quarter fiscal year twenty twenty-four has been very stable with interest rates, but there weren't any that were significantly notable this quarter. Assistant treasurer and myself are posting monitoring interest rates and moving funds to appropriate accounts that will optimize our investments with the best return. Bear Bank reported a yellow rating for Newbury Port Savings Bank. I reached out to our bank representative, Joanne, and she provided a response that I included in the packet. She attributed this rating change to higher-than-expected interest increases and increased phone provisions, but she does not expect, excuse me, she does expect the rating to return to green. The OPEC pension reserve investment fund experienced a gain in quarterly interest. The quarter ended with a net increase of approximately four hundred thousand dollars. And the December thirty-first balance in the fund is six million eight hundred seventy-eight thousand, six hundred sixty-three million. The treasurer's office continued to seek the best possible interest rates and diversified funds appropriately to maximize our investment potential while being compliant with Massachusetts state laws and regulations. So we'll continue to closely monitor all accounts to ensure that the safety and security of all of our investments is met. Does anybody have any question?
Thank you, Erica. Were you satisfied with the Newbury Port response?
I was. I did go back and forth. It's a little bit more than what I provided in the packet and we did have a phone call conversation just like we saw with East, yeah, Eastern Bank a couple of quarters ago. I'm not really surprised with the volatility of the interest rates. I was more surprised to see it come from them. I didn't expect that. But I am gonna closely monitor and make sure that it does go back to green this quarter, so playing next quarter's investment policy, I'll also do it for you.
I know.
I'm not too concerned about it right now.
Eastern Bank, I can't remember exactly what it was, but it seemed like they did some, some move that was intentional and they knew it was going to happen. And I, Newbury Port just holds such a big portion of our funds. That just caught my eye, but I, keep an eye on it.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, the only question I have is upcoming CD activity because of potential changes in, in interest rates. Are there any potential activities that you're trying to lock in higher interest rates before the Fed does what they're threatening to do?
So I just transferred the funds from our CPA. I think I noted this on the last investment report for you. The other bank account that we had open for the CD was a lower interest rate. So when maturity came out, I reached out to all of our banks and our representatives to find out what the highest interest rates are. And that's where this new CD came in at Bank E S B. They were able to provide us with a higher rate than we had and the highest among all of our bank accounts. So that was a great increase. And then we have the stableization CD at months and savings. Their rate was very competitive as well. So whenever those come up to maturity, I do look at all the rates out there. But I'm trying to stagger the date that they become mature. In any case, that we may need the money, I don't want them to all mature at the same time or be at the same rate. So we do have some liquidity in that sense.
Okay, two other quick questions. One was, we, we recently funded bonded for a whole bunch of money for the L project, the street water and sewer project. Have we realized that money and if so, where is, where is it showing or when will it show?
Yeah, we did receive that money. It is not on this yet because it was in January, but it is at Bank E S B and it's a three point five percent rate. So we couldn't go any higher than that due to arbitration laws, but we are getting three point five, which is just under what we bonded for.
Okay, thanks. And I think you might want to explain to people, because I, I had this conversation with you a couple of weeks ago about the arbitration law, arbitration laws that don't allow, don't allow us to make money.
Arbitration just means that you can't earn more money than you are getting the bond for. So if we're getting a bond at a rate of three point five, I can't reinvest the funds at any higher rate than that. If you do, you have to pay it back to the federal government and there's a big process for that. So just, in a sense, for finances, it makes sense to get it into a rate where you're right below it.
Thank you. And the, the second question I had was just if you could explain to people, if there's still anybody watching, but everybody else, about what we intend to do with the interest from that bond since it was a water and sewer bond?
Absolutely. I actually just talked to the accountant today about the best way to do this. So we're both on top of it and the town accountant is going to make sure that money gets put aside on a monthly basis when I turn over all the interest rates to him to make sure that those go back towards the water sewer rate so there isn't like a spike in the rates when those rates get reevaluated. So we're trying to monitor that and make sure that those go back into the cycle.
Thank you.
No problem.
Okay. Any other questions regarding the quarterly report? It looks good. It's nice to see the interest rates going up as far as us getting money back.
Absolutely.
Okay. Well, if that is it, I guess we'll, we'll move on. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Erica.
Thanks very much. Have a great night.
Yep. Hopefully there won't be much of it left, but let's see what we have. Should we look at the, is there anything else?
Let's do the finance director so we can get, let you.
Yeah, the finance director update on the review of expenditure, the budget. I probably should look at the script too. Ian, you're with us. Okay.
It's possible that the audio is just not connected.
This is probably the first time he walked away from his computer.
Hello.
Hey, we can hear you.
It's all right.
There we go. I don't know what's going on my camera, but I'm here.
Okay.
All right.
So you have an update on the revenue expenditure for the budgets?
Yes. So I have, I base this in a couple of quick questions in order to expedite the explanation. But just to give a recap of what's going on right now, the finance director and the town manager's office is working on the F Y twenty twenty-five budget. And I wanted to give a recap of what's going on with that. So what is the current status of the budget? Lynn and I have met with all the different departments in our executive town meetings and are reviewing the submissions. The two of us have upcoming meetings to go over what we determine can be cut from the proposed budget as unfortunately we cannot accept all submissions as they're presented. And we have scheduled meetings with departments to collaborate on this process. At this point, there's no indication that we will not hit our March fourth deadline of submitting our budget as well as presenting to you in two weeks' time what the proposed final budget will be. The big question that I'm sure you all have is, do we have a current surplus or deficit? As of the most recent budget draft, as of two two twenty-four, we have a current deficit of one million dollars, fifty-two thousand, six hundred thirty-nine. So what is the main causes of this deficit? As I shared with you along with the finance committee chair and the school department on January twenty-fifth, we did receive an increase in state aid from F Y twenty-four. This was ninety-eight thousand, six hundred fifty-three dollars or one point one five percent of our budget. However, this is lower than the budget state increase that I used in our preliminary F Y twenty-five town budget presented through December. It's about two hundred forty-five thousand lower than projected. While chapter seventy funding is increasing, it is not increasing to the levels we saw in the last two fiscal years. This, along with the Lincoln Flex Study placeholder that we put in, it's about four hundred thousand, is felt in our current budget shortfall. Now, is this cause for concern? No. As I mentioned earlier, the department's heads have been very flexible and collaborative as part of the budget process. The town has some levers that it can adjust on the revenue side, with investment income being conservatively estimated. At the plenary meeting, we have seen thus far that investments have performed well. So this is an area that we can look to change in our budget as well as new growth in the town. Lynn and I are looking at all options for additional revenues and I know that as a team, we will bring you the select board a balanced budget come March.
Okay. Well, we have to balance it. We don't have a lot of choice, but I know there's a lot of work that has to be done, that's for sure. I don't know if the board has any questions for me?
No. Go for it.
Yeah. All right. Well, thank you for the update. It's good. We're, we're getting closer. We're gonna be meeting with the school committee. I know that they've put out their budget. And so we'll figure out how that's gonna work. So I saw in the reminder, so, okay. Thank you very much, Ian.
Awesome. Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
Yep. So I guess we could look at next, if we just keep going down, there's the warrant petition. A citizen has a petition to look at side yard solar panels and front yard solar panels. And I looked at the drawings, they look very similar to what they were several years ago. So this is, you know, we have, we've got some of these in, so that, I guess, they would have, they filed with call for review by the planning board because of the impact the petitions would have on zoning bylaws. So we need to have a motion to refer both petitions to the planning board, Mass General Law, Chapter forty-eight. Yeah, a move that we refer the warrant petitions from Kirk Friedman for the side yard solar panels and the front yard solar panels to the planning board for their consideration.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? Oh, hold discussion?
Yeah, I want, I know it's late, but I just want to make a comment that I think that, that designing, preparing whatever bylaws by citizen petition is a rotten idea. It doesn't work well. And I think this is, you know, I mean, we're doing what we have to do by referring it to the planning board, but this is a, really not a great idea. I'm gonna vote for it because I have to, but I think it's a terrible idea.
It's a charter change to get rid of that, isn't it?
No, it's a state law change.
State law change?
It's only a little bit tougher than a charter change. Anyway, that was my comment, Tom. Thank you.
Okay. So then we'll, we'll vote. All those in favor of referring? In favor? Yes, okay. The other thing is, according to Mass General Law, we, we also have, we have the designated authority to approve a list of election workers provided by the town clerk. And we have this, this list and it looks like a lot of the familiar folks who I've seen every year, right?
Yep.
And so do we have a motion to accept the list of election workers?
I, I moved to approve the list of election poll workers as provided by the town clerk. Second.
And we have a second. Okay. All those in favor? All right, great. And I guess we might as well look at the one-day liquor license applications. We have two applications for Long Island Adult Center Community Fund to begin on February twenty-second and then on March seventh. I'll move we approve the two one-day liquor license on the dates you provided.
Second.
Okay. No discussion. All those in favor? opposed? All right. So.
Discuss citizen of the year awards.
Oh, I did not skip citizen. I just didn't want to get back to it. We were on such a roll. I, I can discuss that briefly if you want. The citizen award for groups, yes. Why don't you explain this? So last year, when I was the chair, before the annual town meeting, we had convened a, all the chairs of the elected officials and had a discussion on who the citizen of the year award should be. And it was very confusing because the old policy was really weird. There was citizen of the year and a commendation, citizen commendation of the year and never the twine shall meet. And one, if you were ever an elected official, you couldn't be citizen of the year and yada yada. It was very strange. So we talked about just scrapping it all. And so Lynn worked this up and I made some suggestions. And Lynn, if you want to speak on this at all, please do, but we asked, so this, I, I think it's a good idea to have an individual award and if there's a group, we can give that out as well. Not, maybe we won't get nominations for either of them any year, but if they do, they can be discussed. The only thing that Lynn ran it by Jay Tallerman, who said that the only, it would have to be a select board committee to make the decision, right, of the chairs. It would have to be, it's subject to open meeting law, this meeting to discuss who's going to be, which nomination to accept. And otherwise, it can only be the select board chair and like the town manager and maybe some employees. So if we want to have a group talk about it, it has to be open meeting law. Lynn and I discussed the downside to that is it wouldn't be a surprise for someone.
Right.
The upside is, well, who's gonna read the agenda and go to this meeting and find out? The kind of person who'd probably win, I guess. But that might be okay because it'd be, you might have a, you might be awarding citizen of the year and the person didn't know they were gonna get it. They don't come to the meeting. Maybe they want to bring their family. So maybe we want to do it in the open more and tell the person so they can tell their loved ones to come, to come watch. So that, and, but we didn't want to make a decision. We said, let's talk to the board.
Tom, Tom, I could.
Okay, Marco?
Yeah, just for Vaneth and Dan who weren't here, the, the issue came, and I'm gonna blame it, if that's a good word, on Richard Foster, who was trying to split the definition between are you really a citizen of the year or, or were you?
Lifetime achievement.
Or is a lifetime achievement award, right? And so we came up with these two different awards and clearly, Josh, you're right, it doesn't work. I, I thought the process though of having a town managers group get together to do it in secret was fine. The problem was the two different awards. If we just go back to what we had, maybe add this group award if we want to do it. I'm, I'm not sure why that doesn't.
It was the process was the issue.
Yeah, so even predating what the add-on award that Richard did, it was done through executive session of the select board, which is not allowed.
Right, which is not allowed. I get that. That's not allowed.
And then it's the composition of the group that triggers open meeting law and because it's created by the select board.
But what if it's a town managers task force instead of a defined contribution of the group? That doesn't trigger a open meeting law.
Then it can't have any elected officials on it. You can't be there representing your select board seat or your planning board seat or your school committee seat.
Just be there representing yourself. I mean, so the, the point is, don't make it so that somebody represents. I mean, so the point is, don't make it so that somebody represents, somebody from the select board and somebody from the planning board. We don't need that. We just need four or five people to help you with, evaluate the names.
The issue's being discussed.
Five people off the street.
Aren't planning board issues or zoning issues or, or community development issues? I mean, the issue is just Citizen of the Year, you know, so I, I don't know if we could say that, you know, people are just there, no titles, everyone, but it's, it can, I, I, well, I just, you know, I think it's nice to surprise the person.
We've never not gotten a person there, Josh.
I, you know, I, I heard that, but I just, I just picture it. Oh, you're here? Oh, wow.
So we have to look at that. But the other thing is, like, it says in here, you know, a distinguished volunteer service and so you're saying that that creates a conflict because people who are, select board members are paid, we're not volunteers? I mean, I hate to break you, but when I get paid, this is what.
I said if no employee or, I think it cuts out employee or not elected official.
Well, but that's, well, because we've given them to former members of the select board.
Former.
But not active.
But this was the problem, the, the, how it laid it out last year, you couldn't be ever elected for one of the awards.
Or on a board, or currently serving on a board.
Right.
Well, that was nuts, but, because we've given it to people who are on the Park and Rec Commission.
Yeah, which, which makes sense. I just, if you want to let elected people, maybe you're gunning for it, Tom. Yeah, I just, I don't know, I just thought that that was a reasonable thing to cut out. You can wait till you retire.
Do we need to vote on this tonight?
No, I mean, we got time, right?
Yeah, a little bit of time.
Usually put it out at the beginning.
Talk about more. Because, you know, we had, well, Marie Angelis was, was elected, you know, it came, her name came up and, and she was on the board recently, so we gave it to her and, but there probably wouldn't be another chance for a person like her to get the board. You know, she did a lot of work for a long time, you know.
Oh, I'm not, no, no.
Other folks have done it, I mean.
Most of the select board.
You know.
I mean, Arlene Miller was Citizen of the Year.
She got it.
She, she was on the board, but then she kept doing volunteer.
Oh, the other, that was the other thing.
Keep going.
It was, it said like one of them was for an act within the year and one of them was for lifetime. So now those are condensed because that was, there was, there was discussions, well, yeah, pretty good, what they do this year, like, oh my God. So we're cutting that out. I don't know what you're saying, was, I, I think that recently somebody unelected or that just retired from the elected position, that makes sense. If, I don't care, that's just what I thought.
I think, I think that what you proposed is great. I'm just concerned about, why not just get five random people, do it as a town managers